What are we supposed to do?
I don't know.
It's good to have a list.
Yeah.
Russ is saying hi. Can you hear us? Oh, wait, hold on, hold on, hold on. I had to change my, every time I have a like separate Zoom call, I have to change my speaker settings. Hold on.
This planning commission meeting convenes as soon as the...
Can you hear me now? Can you hear us now, Russ?
As the attorney gets online.
Wait, hold on.
Roll call.
How's that?
You're on.
Oh, good.
You're on too.
I'm never sure I know what I'm doing.
You know, if all else fails, you get a pad, Russ, and write us notes.
So, how about a roll call? Planner Wilson?
Yes, okay. We've got Commissioner Van Zandt.
Present.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Cobden and Commissioner Armshar are absent, and Chair Nye.
I'm here.
We have a quorum for our special meeting.
So, would you like to give us an intro?
Yes. Oh, my gosh, I have nothing up.
I didn't even see her there.
Okay, so just to kind of go over why we're holding a special meeting. Mr., sorry, I'm forgetting your name, Miller, came to me yesterday with, or two days ago, requesting to put this on the agenda because of a new CPUC ruling in order to not get under the new ruling, which is going to ultimately make him pay more in terms of the energy that he produces that PG&E will ultimately, over above what he produces for his property. In order to just take advantage of the existing ruling, he has to get this all done by April 1st, and he would not be able to make that timeline if we tried to wait for the March Agenda, so.
Okay, if you'd like to, by the way, you can join us at the applicant table if that makes you feel...
Here?
Yeah, right here.
Makes you part of the team.
There's a microphone there.
And I'll just, so I'll just...
Somebody does, probably.
For a little bit of background, this is a fourplex built in 1983, according to the assessor's office. It is, it's not listed at all, even though it's in the historic district, the National Register doesn't really acknowledge the, you know, and I was thinking about why that might have been, and the building was probably very newly constructed. We entered the register in 1985, but I think the buildup to that took maybe a year or two, so they were writing the descriptions. So when they started, the building may not have even been there yet, because it all happened around that same time when we submitted for the National Register. But in any case, this is a more modern built building. So the applicant is requesting to add photovoltaic panels that will be flush mounted on the east pitch facing the Spring Street parking lot. The solar panels will be visible from the parking lot and from the east end of the Spring Street, and they are unlikely to be visible from the highway, and that's important because this is also within a scenic corridor designation. That is really all I have. I will pull up my, I'll try to make this visible on our screen here so you guys can see the building, and then I will pull down and go to the actual panel configuration. So that's the building. The panels will be visible along that face facing Spring Street. And I'm just going to go scroll down here to the visual. I should put that before the application. Hold on. So this is probably the best. So if you're looking at this, Spring Street would be over here, parking lot on this side, like three kind of pods of panels on that pitch.
Color does not indicate roofing color.
No, no.
Red sort of does.
Sort of.
The yellow is the fire access for the fire people to be able to get on the roof.
Oh, okay. That's good info. Any questions from other commissioners?
None for me.
None.
I have one. I don't know if it'd be less impactful, but did you consider your must-up? But I'm just asking, the solar area being on the other pitch of the roof?
That side is shaded more by trees on the neighboring property, or actually one large one, so it doesn't really get anywhere near as much sunlight as the other side does. The first people that approached me about putting the system on the roof was another company that wanted to do it. That's the plan that they drew up, and I had looked at it before. To be honest, I wanted to put it on a pole behind the house so it would be less visible and get more sun. Then that has to be engineered. I'm not opposed to doing that. The biggest problem I have right now is if I don't get a permit on the books before April 2nd, and that has to go through PG&E and they take 30 days, this isn't going to happen. And then according to the calculations, I'm out $350,000 in PG&E bills for the next 10 years. So I'd love to not give them that money.
I think we can understand that simple math.
Yeah. So I'm up for changing this in the future. What I understand is once the plan is approved by them and I get their document that's the permission to connect, that we can change is I have three years to put it on the roof, or three years to install it. So I'm not opposed to changing it in whatever way looks better and works better. There is a section there you can kind of see if I can go up here.
Sure, thanks.
This line here is a different roof pitch. This is added on, and one of the things, the reason why it's not historical to say is this house burned down in the '60s and was completely rebuilt. It was used to get brothel in 1850. So this one here, I thought would actually be a better place because it has full southern exposure.
Is that like, is that a shed? I ought to know because I certainly know the building, but is that a shed or is it another like gabled or pitched section?
It's just a different pitched section. So that very, you know, the roof is basically like this, and that section goes there.
Oh, oh, I see, yeah. So it doesn't change that much.
It's a little bit more hidden from the front, and of course, more southern exposure. I always thought that at some day I would get, you know, a permit and the approval to do a proper parking structure behind there, which would end up being a deck for the upper floor, you know, and a carport for the lower section, and put the panels on top of that. But, you know, I don't have the money to do all that kind of stuff. That takes a lot of engineering. I just don't have it. This is, and then the other thing too is the technology has changed for doing these kind of roof mounts. That roof is relatively new, you know, only a few years old. That's what they call standing seam roof. And they have clamps that clamp, it's all in here, clamp right on that. It makes it, one, easier and, two, a lot more affordable. The ones that I have found in here, from Alt E is the one website that I get most of my stuff from. The clamps clamp right on the seams and the panels clamp right on them. You don't even need rails. And then there's little discs that the panels sit on that support them. Clamps clamp them down to that, but the discs even have spaces to tie the wires on to.
And no roof perforation too.
Yes, because that to me is really important. Was the other reason I wanted to put it on a pole mount in the back. It's a brandy roof that I do not want to have to do again in my lifetime.
Right.
So that was important to me.
Any, do you have anything else to add?
The only other thing is, I went to the county yesterday to kind of get pre-approval on this because I'm only going to get one shot at this, partially because of your schedule. And thank you very much for meeting with me today. And so they wanted, there was another document that they needed in terms of the mounting hardware. It took me a while to drill down through the manufacturer's website to find. It's actually in their installation manual. So if you need copies of that, I have that. It shows all their specifications in terms of the codes and everything else. It's, you know, it's approved for everybody for doing this, including for...
I don't think, I don't think we need that technical stuff. Our main concern, you know, in the historic district is aesthetics. And is there any, do you guys have any discussion?
No discussion.
No, I think given that it's on the parking lot and, you know, hidden behind other things, they don't have a concern.
And of course, I could be dependent upon to provide some discussion generally, but if, well, a question for Amy. If you, if you, you know, within your time window, find it preferable to do a different mounting system like on a pole, as you said, or in a less intrusive way, I don't think anybody'd be opposed to that. And so would that require a reapplication or?
If you were changing significantly, if it was minor and what we could call substantially compliant with what was approved, then, you know, we could, I would either reach out to the chair or if you wanted to sign a liaison, we could do that. If it was going to be substantially different, we'd have to still come back, even if it seemed like a more preferable configuration.
I would call that substantial, and I'm not opposed to completely do the whole thing over again.
Yeah, just for the planning commission, I think you'd just be like paying the fee again.
Yeah.
And getting an approval for the reciting of it, but the... Regardless of how it looks, we approve them, so generally.
I know, I think it's ugly too, because the roof itself, when I came in here, I was going to do green to match the trim. And there was a city council at the time that was like, "Yeah, we don't have any green roofs in Nevada City. Do you mind if we pick the color?" And at first, I kind of got ruffled, but I was like, "You know what? I'm not looking at it. You guys are, so whatever you want to do." And they ended up picking that because it looks like an old, it's called stressed metal, and they thought that looks like an old mine shack, so, okay, whatever you want. So, yeah, you know, I like the look of it, and I would not like to have the solar panels on the roof either. But if I don't at least get this approved and get PG&E's piece of paper, that's good.
Understood, and I think we're, I think we're happy to help you out in this situation.
Thanks.
So we have enough information, I think, to entertain a motion?
One thing I'd like to add is for the conditions of approval, I didn't add this, but I do need to get it reviewed by our fire department, so before I can release the approval. But, yeah. It looks like it meets all the requirements, but I need to stamp on there.
So would you like to?
Just add that as a condition, just that it needs to be reviewed by our division fire chief.
Okay.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the architectural review application in front of us, including items one, two, three, and four, and what Amy just said to follow up.
All right, I second the motion.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Zandt.
Yes.
And Chair Nye.
Yes.
Motion passes three, two, zero, two absent.
Thank you.
All right, good luck with it.
Thank you.
When we first moved here, that was a bar. I don't know.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Nobody in this room is...
Uh.
You would, bro.
Mad Dog and Englishman or something like that?
Yeah.
I didn't remember. I just heard of that.
You worked there.
Played music there every weekend, just about.
Yeah.
It was the coolest place in town.
Except for the eight-foot ceiling when the band was playing. That was, you didn't have to do lunch with the apps.
Yes.
I can tell you stories.
We need to adjourn this meeting and then wait till at least 1:30 to start the next meeting.
This special meeting is adjourned.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar minutes.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, item two is site plan five-five-five Searls Avenue. If you'd like to queue that up for us.
Sure, yes. So this is an application for a site plan and for tree removal. It's a building that is not depicted on the 1898 Sanborn map. Site was used as a fitness center from the 1980s to 2018. It has a base zoning designation of light industrial, and the site currently hosts several cannabis businesses within the existing buildings. The parking site is also designated within the scenic corridor designation, which promotes scenic consideration along the highway corridor. And the larger building at five-four-five Searls was originally constructed around 1973, and five-five-five was constructed in 1988, according to city and county records I was able to find. This application is for a site plan amendment to add 31 new parking stalls, 12 of which will be compact spaces and two will be reserved for clean air vehicles at five-four-five and five-five-five Searls Avenue. The proposed parking lot will incorporate landscaping and security lighting. The area of disturbance will be approximately 16,000 square feet and will involve approximately 53 cubic yards of cut and 9 cubic yards of fill. And that was from an earlier iteration. I'm assuming it's about the same. The same, okay. Drainage will go toward proposed concrete drainage swell over a hammerhead turnaround. That's not shown on this plan, but it was shown in a previous iteration, and I did confirm with the applicant that that will still be there. The applicant is proposing to install seven pole security lights mounted on 14-foot poles, and that'll be kind of throughout the expanded parking area. The proposed parking area is intended to serve existing business space as well as proposed second floor for suites one and three of the building addressed at five-five-five Searls Avenue. Anything else I need to mention? We did go to advisory review because of the site plan component. That was made up of Chair and I, Commissioner Brown, and Planner Wolfson, and that was on January 12th. The committee had advised the applicant at that time to reconsider lighting height, which at that time was proposed at 24 feet, and they did revise that height to the 14-foot, which is the recommended height from the municipal code. This will bring the parking lot into compliance for the standard light industrial parking ratios for, you know, standard light industrial designations. But for the planning commission's knowledge, when we have a cannabis business specifically, we do ask them to look at the parking specifically for their use and for the demand that they're going to be looking at. But they can at least now look at this study and determine how many they're allocated, which was listed on their plan, their improvement plans. So I think with that, well, they are removing 12 trees, including oaks, madrones, and cedars, and pines. They're all between four and 15 inches diameter, so some of those wouldn't even qualify for requiring a permit, probably. Pursuant to section, our municipal code, the proven body needs to make findings that the tree removal is necessary for a reasonable use of the property. And with that, I think that is all I have. I will also let you know, for both this and the next item, the city engineer is supposed to be providing me some language to add a condition that for site plan review, they need to do like one-half percent of the engineer's cost estimate or something like that to pay for his review fee. So that will be added on to both this and the next item. And I will get that language specifically. He was working on it right as I was down here. So before we're done, I'll read that through.
You're representing this project, right?
That's correct.
Would you like to join us at the guest table?
Absolutely.
And I do have the information, if you'd like me to... I can pull it up. I have the condition of approval that Brian wrote up. I'll provide it on... I'll share my screen here if I can. And I'll go ahead and read it. Prior to building permit issuance, the applicant shall provide the following engineer's estimate, and I guess it really should be site before ground disturbance because you're not getting a building. But engineer's estimate for site improvements used for determination of plan check inspection fees include all onsite and offsite improvements and trenching for all utilities. Do not include other utility agency facilities. A grading plan with sufficient detail, 10 scale for precise grading around buildings, showing ADA path of travel, drainage around buildings, roof drainage, hardscaping slopes, walls, and utility facilities. An erosion control plan, offsite improvements plan. Payment of applicable city fees for plan check and inspection. Plan checking fees are determined at 1.5% of the engineer's estimate, and inspection fees are determined at 4.5% of the engineer's estimate. And payment of connection fees for water and sewer, and then payment of AB-1600 fees if they're applicable, which they won't be for a parking area.
Is there anything you'd like to add to Amy's summary?
No, I think that sums it up pretty well. The plans have been revised to incorporate the recommendations I received the last time I appeared in front of them. I'm always blanking on the name of that body.
Advisory review.
Advisory review committee. So the lighting was changed and the layout was changed to reflect the electric vehicle charging stations, both current and future. And beyond that, the owner and myself have reviewed the conditions of approval and have no concerns about those, and I'm just here to answer any questions anybody might have.
Okay, there any questions from commissioners for staff or the applicant?
No.
There was, I went over the lighting specs again, and I noticed the color temperature went to 3,000, which is...
Correct.
Good. And the standards for the specs for outdoor lighting talk about deflection from horizontal not to exceed 30%. I mean, however that language goes, but I think it means this.
A full cutoff.
Yeah, full cutoff. And I noticed that the spec of those units didn't have the cutoff, I think in the...
As I did too. I looked through this and I consulted with the lighting engineer on more than one occasion. I said, "Show me the word 'full cutoff' in all of this technical information." His final answer to me was that when it says dark sky approved, he says, "You can't get dark sky approved unless it's full cutoff."
Okay, I actually didn't see that.
So I learned a little bit about that, but I sure would have liked to have seen those words, but...
Yeah, I actually didn't see, I'm sorry, I didn't see the dark skies compliant language in the spec.
It's on sheet E2 in the lower right-hand corner.
Scrolling. Reducing now.
You won't see the words "full cutoff." I've read this thing a couple times.
Got it.
But in the very lower right corner under product specifications, about the third bullet point down.
Oh, I see it. Yep. Beautiful, and it's especially important because it's in the scenic corridor, and then these lights will affect the, you know, the viewscape of traffic going by. And there are plenty of, like, non-compliant lighting instruments there, but got to start somewhere, and sure appreciate your spirit.
Okay, thank you.
Clarification, Amy, on the project description. It's the last sentence there. It says, "As well as a proposed second floor." Is it really just a potential, or is there actually already a proposal or application? It's not really, they're not changing any of the exterior, so it's not really in your purview. Got it. It kind of only, so it's just an interior floor that they're adding. And then the stairs and everything is all interior, so all the items are the same. Gotcha. But the, it came into play because it's still an addition, and we needed to make a sequafinding, and because we're adding square footage, there's a separate sequafinding, so the sequafinding references the addition. Thank you.
And this increase in parking is to actually comply with the light industrial parking requirements?
Correct.
Yeah, so.
I would note the language is, does allow lower amounts of parking, right? It's the minimum required, so, I mean, I don't have a problem with what's here, but just to be clear that not everything is required to maximize to that level.
And to be clear, we did not ask them, I'm assuming they decided they needed this. The staff did not ask them to add parking to come into compliance. We have been asking the cannabis businesses to like show that they're going to meet their parking demand, and so maybe that was part of the impetus of this, but I'm assuming they just determined that they needed additional parking, the business owners.
Yeah, I mean, the dynamic overall was that, you know, the owner came to me and said, "I want to add square footage," so automatically I say that's more parking, and so we sort of got into the ordinance and so forth. And it also gave us all the opportunity collectively to sort of answer the question about who parks where.
Yes, which I appreciate.
Well, and also to clarify too, I think the spaces is leased, the owner leases it to other cannabis businesses. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
So the final, the final people who are using it may not be, will change over time as well.
It will, and the quantity of stalls, you know, there's sort of an arrangement here where 569, which has a retail component, is leaning a little bit on the 555, but they're owned by the same owner, so until that changes. So currently, I think they're enjoying some sort of, you know, pretty heavy demand on that and so forth. And so this is providing some, you know, improved relief to that instead of just a gravel parking lot. And then, you know, I talked with the owner, and I said, "Well, you know, the reality is that a number of these spaces have a lot less people in them, you know, employees than you might have in other light industrial environments." And he says, "Yeah, but I'm looking to the future also. If one day there's something in here besides that, then there may be a lot more employees in there." So this supports that.
It seems sufficiently justified.
Are we open to other discussion, questions at this point?
No, now we need to do public comments if there's any. we sort of got into the ordinance and so forth. And it also gave us all the opportunity collectively to, to sort of answer the question about who parks where.
Yes, which I appreciate.
Well, and also to clarify too, I think the spaces is leased, the owner leases it to other cannabis businesses, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
So the final, the final people who are using it may not be, will change over time as well.
It will, and, and the, the quantity of stalls, you know, I, I, there's sort of an arrangement here where 569, which has a retail component, is leaning a little bit on the 555, but they're owned by the same owner, so until that changes, so, so currently I think they're enjoying some sort of, you know, pretty heavy demand on that and so forth, and so this is providing some, you know, improved relief to that instead of just a gravel parking lot. And then, you know, I talked with the owner and I said, well, you know, the reality is that a number of these spaces have a lot less people in them, you know, employees than you might have in other light industrial environments. And he says, yeah, but I'm, I'm looking to the future also, you know, if one day there's something in here besides that, then there may be a lot more employees in there. So this supports that.
It seems sufficiently justified.
Are we open to other discussion, questions at this point?
No, now, now we need to do public comments if there's any public comments on this application, either in the room or on Zoom, now's the time.
Anyone in our live audience on the comment on this? And it looks like Sightline is on. Sightline, would you like to make a comment on this item? Raise your virtual hand.
Those are just my employees keeping an eye on things. It really is, they commented to me as I walked out the door.
They're not, they're not raising their hand.
Good.
Do you get a written review when you return?
I'm sorry.
Do you get a written review when you return of your performance?
No.
That was a no.
I got that. I thought that's what.
They're only unsolicited appraisals.
So no public comments? Now, now it's open to a commission discussion if anyone has any discussion of this proposal before we vote.
I feel good. Great.
Pretty straightforward from my standpoint.
I did run up the other thing I appreciated was I saw that you added some detail on the bike parking and appreciated that.
Oh, yes.
Useful bike parking as well.
Yeah.
And especially appreciate you considering the comments on the, bringing the height of the fixtures down in line with the code requirements, so it makes it a lot easier to approve.
We're here to please. Within limits.
Development while enhancing the quality of Nevada City's environs.
While respecting the traditional lands of the country, I guess.
Wendy, any comment?
Nope.
Nope.
Do we have a motion?
And there are actually three actions to take here, so.
Lead us through it, please.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna read through, through what I've recommended here in the, in, in the staff report. Determine the project is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to section 15301E of the Environmental, Environmental Quality Act guidelines, which exempts minor alterations of existing public or private structures or facilities involving no or negligible expansion of use, including additions to existing structures provided that the addition will not result in an increase of more than 50% of the floor area of the structure before the addition or 10,000 square feet where public services are available and the area is not environmentally sensitive.
Is somebody raising their hand? I can't tell on the screen. Is that what that means?
No, that's just the cursor.
Oh, that's my cursor, yeah, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Armshar.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Zant.
Yes.
Vice Chair Cobden.
Yes.
And Chair Nye.
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Whoop, we're not done yet.
We have a couple more motions, a three-motion process.
Approve the proposed site plan parking expansion subject to conditions of approval as amended today at the meeting with the city engineers, added conditions as may be modified at the public hearing, making findings, finding A pursuant to section 17.88.010 of the Nevada City Municipal Code.
So moved.
I'll second.
Armshar, Cobden. I need to, I need to separate you guys.
Right, so the voices are coming from.
Commissioner Armshar.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Zant.
Yes.
Vice Chair Cobden.
Yes.
And Chair Nye.
Yes.
Okay, last one. In approving the tree removal application as condition located at 555 Searls Avenue in Nevada City, the planning commission finds that the tree removal identified in the exhibits provided by the applicant are necessary for reasonable use of the property.
So moved.
I'll second this one. Got it.
Okay, Commissioner Armshar.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Zant.
Yes.
Vice Chair Cobden.
Yes.
And Chair Nye.
Yes.
All right, now you're done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Hope you get a good review on return to the office.
That's okay, I have the authority to reject anything I don't like.
You're going there with approval, so.
There is that.
Yeah.
Hope it goes smoothly.
Yeah, me too. We're kind of ready to move to the next step.
So I, I believe I am recusing myself from this one though, Amy?
Well, unless, unless Russ has some news for us.
I should also say that in full disclosure, I am friends with the applicant, and I believe I can be impartial in that process.
Russ, we are already on item three. What's the, what's the news?
Yes, I see that. Uh, yeah, if there's a, there's a couple of more facts I need to gather from Commissioner Armshar before we can really, you know, get a clear path on this, so if that would be agreeable with everybody, if you could recuse yourself for conflict of interest today.
All right, and the disclosure and conflict of interest is the proximity to my business called Little Rad Riding Hood. That's really my, that's my LLC.
Located at.
Located at, located at 303 Broad Street for traders.
So she's recusing for the, for the entire application?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll be outside.
Thank you. Oh, hopefully they got the best, I forgot to ask about the best.
Oh, the sound, okay.
Uh, maybe, maybe she could call me?
Yes.
Do you have, do you have a number?
I don't have it on, yeah.
Maybe go see Gabby, Gabby probably has it.
Thank you.
And that's a disclosure, but not a recusal.
Yeah.
Seems, seems reasonable. So we're on to item three. Let me get this screen to the right size and get back to the agenda. 300 Spring Street, conditional use permit, site plan, variance request for outdoor dining slash beer garden, and, so whoever would like to, or everybody can come up to the table if you want.
Might have to add some chairs.
Hello. Hello, welcome back.
So I'll do a little introduction here. This is a use permit and site plan to establish an outdoor beer garden at 300 Spring Street and a variance from required parking space requirements, and then two proposed signs. Property is at 300 Spring Street. The subject property is located on the 1898 Sandburn Maps, but it doesn't depict the existing building, and it has a pretty, not very nice description in our national register about the building, but says it doesn't have any architectural integrity.
Real soon.
It's still standing.
Still being used.
The proposed taproom use within the building space is a permitted use within a general business zoning designation, though not considered a contributing building, and the product site is designated within the city's historical combining district in recognition of the area's historical interest and aesthetic value. The application is for the use permit to convert the existing parking and walkway space for an outdoor dining beer garden, is associated with a brew-built tap house, preparing to lease or now lease the building at 300 Spring Street. Hours of operation for the business will be 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM Monday through Thursday, 4:00 PM to 12:00 AM on Friday, 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM on Saturday, and 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM on Sunday. The applicants have prepared copies to enclose, or prepared two options to enclose a 4,261 square foot of outdoor space. Option A involves enclosing the space with a 3.5-foot wall along the side and east, the south and east sides. The planning commission did previously approve the six-foot wall along the west side of the property with an option to do a cedar fence as an alternative due to a potential PG&E conflict. For option one, the walls will have peekaboo windows with iron gate details, and option two would feature a two-foot stacked rock wall with an iron rail that features a Pine Street Bridge motif. Both options would feature iron gate entrances along the site, the street-side walls. A trash enclosure would be located in the northwest corner of the site, and bicycle parking is proposed at the southwest corner. The property is within general business, which allows for restaurant use, but outdoor use would be, requires the conditional use permit. The existing building is already authorized for the tap house use, though they will need to secure their license with the state for, for alcohol service. The applicant is proposing two signs. Sign one is a single-sided sign that will arch above the wall entry on the Spring Street side, and sign two is a freestanding two-sided sign that will hang from the previously approved sign post, and I say that because it looks like the post is gone for right now, and that's probably because you guys are gonna do some.
But it's in the same location.
Yeah, okay, so, but there was a previous sign that was located there, they'll be hanging a, a sign at that same location. Sign one is a total of 24 square feet and sign two is a total of 10 square feet, because the property has entry along two sides qualifying each as a separate entity pursuant to this section of the municipal code that deals with signs. Each entry may have a sign that does not exceed 24 square feet, so they're within their sign limitations. I did want to talk briefly about the parking, so all the planning commission's purview is to make the findings for the, for a variance of the parking standard. They will need to go, if, if this approved, they will still have to go before the city council, and the city council will determine the in-lu fee, the appropriate in-lu fee for, for that, for this project, but they, it can't get to there unless the planning commission makes the variance findings. So that is, that's really all the planning commission needs to worry about today, not anything to do with the in-lu. But the, the whole project will be contingent on the city council also approving the in-lu fee. And.
So we'd be approving a recommendation of the city council?
So I did talk to the city manager about that, you don't need to do a recommendation, you can, you can put some comments in if you would like to, but there's no, there's no requirement that you make a recommendation.
But our approval is a recommendation and is to be, it'll be, it's ratified by the city council essentially.
The, well, it's a, it's a recommendation that you'd, you'd be okay with some sort of program for in-lu. Yeah, I suppose that, that's fair.
And then the, then the exact exchange or whatever is, is up to them because we're not, we're not enabled anyway on any, any fiscal basis.
Right, yeah, and, yeah, all you have to do is make the findings for the variance, and I, and I can go through those as you get to them if you'd like.
That's clearer.
And I think that is all that I have right now. I'll bring, I'll bring the sight plan up on the, on Zoom so you guys can see it, but you can start your discussion.
Oh, well, at this time, would you guys like to add anything to Amy's intro? Anything to add?
Amy covered it, too, well.
Okay.
The one thing would be that we had that meeting with a small group of you, the advisory meeting, and as the last applicant, so we went back and adhered to your suggestions. I think it was mostly about lighting, downlighting and a few things like that.
So, yeah, on the same topic, we did revise our any outdoor lighting to be dark sky compliant.
Excellent, cool, yeah, and I saw that in the, in the plan too, so appreciate that. Are there any questions for, from the commission of the applicants or staff?
I did have one question about the lighting specifically, the one place that didn't seem to have it were those floodlights in the back, which do seem to be.
Those, those, the ones that we resubmitted after the advisory committee are dark sky compliant.
Okay, I think that's reflected in the document we have here.
There's the example of the outdoor lighting shown at the end.
Yeah, I'm sure it is. Yeah, they're right there.
In the packet, I still see the old ones.
Is it this, are you looking up this?
These are the revised ones for the back alley, and those are compliant.
But they can be directed, I think, I think it said if they're directed downwards or...
Yeah, there's a note about keeping them direct, directed downward.
They are directable.
Yeah.
Certainly they'll be directed downward, yeah.
So we can, you can add a condition that ensures that the floodlights are directed downward.
I see what you're saying, they're twistable. They seem to be twistable.
Yeah, exactly, and there's, there's often a tendency to direct them outwards or they get bumped or whatever.
The alleyway that they're shining down onto is only about three and a half feet wide, so they really are gonna be going.
And it's fenced down.
Yeah, no one back there.
It's fenced, and it's a side of a building.
Yeah, so, just to, go ahead.
Oh, no, I think, I, that's my question, I can save discussion for later.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Let's see. If I had a question, it was answered.
But which one?
Well, it's unspecified, but it's been answered. Is there any, do we have any public comments on this, on this project?
Anyone in the, oh, we got Stuart.
Hello, everyone. I'm Stuart Baker, I'm the head of the Nevada City Chamber of Commerce, and I've worked really closely with this team, our office has. I think they really come with a lot of great ideas for beautification, and we're really excited about the potential of the corridor along Spring Street being revitalized, and we really feel that this project will do that. And so we're really very much in support of it, we feel like they're, they've been great community players, at least from our perspective, and so we support the project. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I do have someone on Zoom?
Yeah, hi, everybody, Alex Zabo, Zabo Vineyards. Hi, Rebecca. It's a great opportunity to make our town a little bit better, a little bit more cool, whatever cool is, and doing architecture when it gets very cool, oh, it's way cool, it's a direct proportion to money spent in general. My question really for the commission, as well as you guys, I don't know what you have in mind, and taste is a relative thing, but what were some of your concerns as a town in really having an opportunity to make a decent piece of size of land better in the long run? And how do you feel you've accomplished that, you guys, the future owners, and/or what do you think were some of your shortfalls that you would have liked to have done? That's it, just concerned personally. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll consider those rhetorical questions because public comment is not the time to begin discussion, but, but, but those are, those are great points, so thank you.
And I do have one person online.
Could I get a better plan of how it is outside, or a better site plan?
I could set, it, it's online, so you could, yeah. If you, the phone number, I've got, I don't have a name, but you're on public comment, you go ahead and address the planning commission?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, this is the Zoom phone number that I'm on, and I don't think the micro, I don't know, can you hear me?
Yes, yeah, we can hear you.
Hi, Matthew.
Okay, I don't know if the Zoom microphones are working, it's very, very difficult to hear a lot of the conversation, but my comment on this project is I'm just worried about alcohol sales in general and how drinking is of such a huge degree in our society, and if you just look at our local police blotter, you see that it's just nonstop DUI arrests, and those are just the ones that are so obvious, they can't avoid it. I'm just curious that since it's a couple doors down from the police station, if the police are willing to arrest people that are heading to their vehicles drunk, and then another distance, other direction, we used to have the pub that the city was so adamant about letting operate as a place that operated as a, a pub for many years. And so just the kind of the double standard, and I understand the chamber's point, excited about the project because when people drink, they actually do spend more money, it's proven fact, so I get the commerce part of it, but I don't get the fallout from the emergency response part of the alcohol in our society. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
No more on Zoom.
And no more in person? All righty. So if there are no more questions from the commission of the applicants or staff, any discussion? And are we considering, are we considering, what are we considering in order? The entire project or?
So, we've got.
Quite a list.
We've got six. We've got six?
I thought it was eight.
Oh, no, we got six motions-
Okay.
That need to be made, uh, SEQA, the use permit, um, the variance, the site plan, the sign application and the architectural review.
Should we take them one at a time or?
Yeah. Yeah, well, yeah, we should do that. Um, so, uh, we're, we are recommending, and our staff is recommending an infill exemption. Uh, and I included a little synopsis of, um, why it falls in, in there in your staff reports. So I'll read through the, um, the, the SEQA determination, which is that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to sixth section.
Sorry, Amy, can you, can you send us to a page so we can follow along?
Oh, sorry, uh, I am on-
Why does it say on here? I don't know. Hold on. It actually doesn't look like-
She's doing it for memory.
No, no, but I'm on the, it doesn't, give me the page. Actually, I don't, oh, wait, the pages are in this upper corner, I see.
Yeah, that's, that's where I'm, I'm here, but I can find it on here.
I think it's page 20.
It's 20, you think?
I think it's 20 in the entire agenda.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. Uh, we are at environmental review?
Yes.
Number one?
Yes.
Okay, great.
So determine the project is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to section 15332 of the California Environmental Policy Act. Guidelines for projects characterizes infill development making findings A through E in the staff report.
Motion?
Wait, are we there, yeah, I thought we were in discussion.
Oh, sorry, I thought you guys were asking me to read through.
Okay.
Oh, I think we just wanted to be directed so we could discuss one point by point.
The SEQA, oh, okay. Did you want me to go over some of the-
No, no, not, not SEQA, but like the-
Yeah, okay, well, let's, let's-
Staff recommendations.
I suggest we go bit by bit. And, and is there any discussion on this, on the SEQA, on the SEQA motion? Uh, the exemption?
Uh-uh.
I'd move that we approve as presented.
Can we, can we do it in this fashion?
If you guys want to keep discussing, I, I recommend we probably have all the motions done at once, so.
All right, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And then, well, guide us if you would, Amy, to the next, um-
Oh.
To the next-
Number two is gonna be on page 21.
Will be the-
I'm not seeing page numbers, I'm afraid.
Yeah, no-
Oh, here?
There you go.
Okay.
You'll see them on the, on the, your computer kept, keeps track.
If I know where to look.
So we're, approve the proposed use permit?
So that would be, yeah, that's the next motion, the use permit, um, subject to conditions of approval, um, making findings A through C. So the, the findings here would be that the outdoor seating conforms to the requirements and intent of the zoning ordinance and general plan. That any additional conditions stipulated by the commission as deemed necessary in the public interest have been met. Um, that the applicant has demonstrated that the requested outdoor seating use will not jeopardize, uh, adversely affect or be detrimental to the public health, safety and welfare, um, to the surrounding property and residents. And I should mention, we need to add the same condition from the city engineer as we did for the previous one. And I can re-go through that, did you guys?
We saw we got it.
I have a question. On, on the term the applicant has demonstrated, I assume that's demonstrated through the drawings that we have?
Yeah, mhm, yeah, if, if you have any concerns about the, what was it, the safety-
No, I don't, I just was understanding what determined.
Yeah, with, with the documentation that they've submitted.
Okay, thank you. They can move the tables around if they have to, right?
They, we, we're not, we're-
I'm just kidding. Amy, I'm not trying to put you on, sorry.
Yeah, can you pick the chairs up and throw them?
Can't do that. Police will get, get called over.
Okay.
I have a general question. I noticed that the, on the site plan, there's game area, so, uh, for quackie, um, pong, what, what games?
Pong?
What, uh, what games are you picturing? I'm just curious for the-
Probably some, uh, beanbag toss, uh, maybe bocce ball, uh, maybe some giant jenga.
Okay, so it's like an open, it's an open like ground area?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
We'll have a couple of games available on, some of the ones to bring on.
Cornhole, perhaps?
Yeah. Most certainly, we'll have, we'll have some cornhole, yeah.
Definitely cornhole.
Terribly popular just now.
But no pickleball.
A small pickleball court.
I, I wonder what that meant, because I wasn't sure that it wasn't like some tabletop surface or something, I, I wasn't, uh-
It'll be more, like, less fixed, uh, a little more flexible with the space.
And do you have a, do you have a furniture, a furniture scheme, a furniture display, style of furniture, since it is visible?
There are some examples of the outdoor furniture drilling back out.
I think it's at the very beginning. Oh, I thought it was at the top, next to the ballers.
Yeah, Amy, if you, if you wouldn't mind, because I'm, I'm-
I'm trying, which one, where is it?
I'm afraid of losing my place in this vast PDF.
Yeah, here.
So there is exterior, like picnic table style.
Okay.
Um, mostly wood and steel.
And, um-
Wow, what happened?
And then the table and chair setups, if you, if you could zoom in on that for us?
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm trying to do.
So you're thinking, you're thinking black ones?
Probably dark, yeah.
Yeah. It's sort of consistent with the, um, the, uh, ordinance that pertains to outdoor dining in the, uh, public right of way, which they should be compatible, they should, you know, look familiar to each other.
And those were on, we, we had a list of approved colors for umbrellas, right?
Those are definitely in there, as I recall.
And, and really, the, that approval was for the right of way? So there, there's nothing set for private property, but, um, but, you know, my advice has been to anyone proposing anything out, you know, for outdoor, that the same considerations are probably gonna go into it.
Especially when they're comparably visible, like, when they're, they, they could be visible from the same point of view, you know? If there's outdoor dining in the private, in the public right of way elsewhere on Spring Street, it'd be nice for them to be not uniform, but with some, you know, unity of vision.
Well, from the same color palette that we use, yeah.
I don't know if we had a black one on there, but, um, it's probably-
There were a lot of colors, I don't remember, but-
But there were eight colors, you guys added two, I remember.
I think that's compatible with Navy.
Yep. Is that okay with you guys?
Yeah.
And you're done with the idea, right?
Yeah, of course, yeah, I'm not gonna put neandrians friends or out there.
Yeah. Oh, darn.
Okay.
Will you be pulling the furniture in after hours?
No, we don't have any storage space for it, uh, we'll probably cable lock it all up at night.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll be cabled up.
It'll all be inside your fenced area too.
Yeah. Yeah. Try not to move as much as possible, but try to be secure.
Yeah.
You, you probably just have to figure out like how it goes, if it gets interfered with or whatnot and how to respond.
Yeah, we do have a small storage area that maybe chairs could go in afterwards, but that's gonna be a maybe. It's kind of a lot of labor to move, like, a bunch of picnic tables.
Yeah.
Small, very small staff.
Now I'm looking at, uh, item three, the variance request.
Yeah. So the findings that I'm suggesting you make that, uh, are that there are special circumstances applicable to the property, including that, uh, the .12 acre lot is relatively small for hosting a commercial business and the corner configuration is better suited for a vibrant commercial use rather than for parking. Um, and so that the strict application of the standard parking ratio as outlined in 17.880.030 of the City Municipal Code deprives the property of privileges enjoyed by other general business properties in the vicinity that are also within the general business district and are built out to their respective, uh, property lines, providing no onsite parking. And a second finding would be that conditions have been applied, that the project will assure that the variance to reduce, to the reduced parking shall not constitute a special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and zone in which the property is situated.
So I, I have, um, I guess two questions here. The first is, um, if anyone can answer, this is a general question. There are a couple of these parking spaces I don't think I have ever seen cars in.
True.
And this is not like, I'm not trying to, um, I'm genuinely curious, is there a reason for that that anyone is aware of? That?
No.
No one?
Well, also-
I'll throw in an answer for that.
Please.
The, the previous, the previous business owner, and you've, you've owned the property for a while, right? Um, they had a barrier up around their, around their parking, so nobody could park there, even customers couldn't park there. She had it blocked off, as I recall.
Yeah.
Um, parkers were not welcome, uh, as I recall.
You could park on the side towards Golden Era, but along South Pine, it's too dangerous to pull on. The city didn't want that happening anyway, that's why that was blocked off.
So that was a city conversation?
Years ago, because pulling out there is just really difficult, that's why I made the road fares. And pulling out from all those places just be-
The history, I was told, was that there was a prior owner who tried to, um, and this was way back, tried to lease out parking spaces just for, for parking, and the city said you can't do that because people were pulling into Pine, you know, backing into Pine Street. Um, we, well, we, the city engineer and I met with Rebecca out there, and we only were able to really find three legal parking spaces out there. So that was, um, that's, that, that, that's essentially what we determined, how we determined their, their overall parking credit.
Okay, and those three spaces are going to be taken up with the outdoor dining space? And that's proposal, okay.
Correct.
And then, um, to clarify, you are, um, proposing some motorcycle parking spaces or on the property itself? Or like on the parking spaces off-street?
On the street.
Okay.
So our cur cut entrance on Spring, uh, we are giving that as motorcycle parking instead of having it to pull into our, into our space.
And what was the reasoning behind that? Were there studies or was, yeah?
I, I should mention, there hasn't been no determination that that will absolutely be, um, motorcycle parking. That's what they're suggesting, but, um, it's really because it's on city right of way. It'll be up to the city engineer to determine what's the appropriate parking along the street.
Okay.
So that, no, go ahead.
How many, do we have offhand numbers of motorcycles and motorcycle parking and what that's going to accomplish if it were to? Like, I read in Stuart's, I think it was Stuart's letter, uh, the comment about how motorcycles take up entire parking spaces and this would potentially designate them? I know that, I think the National Hotel has-
There's some across from the National in front of-
Could it be in front of it?
Yeah.
Right in front of it, yeah. Across the street. Our, our thinking was just that since there are a lot of motorcyclists and sometimes you do have inefficient parking of motorcycles in a, in a full car space, providing more efficient motorcycle parking would be beneficial for everybody.
Okay, so it's not coming from like a data place, but just a observation place?
Yeah, there, there has been no determination that, that, that will be, uh, motorcycle parking.
Okay.
It's been suggested, it's just been suggested it's a possible-
It's a trade-off.
Mitigation and-
Our proposal was the, you know, giving that parking space back to the city and putting three motorcycle parking spaces in it because that's by other codes that we looked in other towns, that was the amount you could fit in a parking space.
Okay.
And we were proposing that we could trade three of our required parking spaces for those three parking spaces. That doesn't seem to be what's-
Not flying with everybody.
By everybody, but-
But that's not something this body needs to-
You don't need to worry about it, okay.
That'll be something-
Not apples to apples.
That's, yeah, that's not us, yeah.
Okay. I'm just thinking about it in terms of the variance, like, if it's, I'm, I'm trying to think about the whole picture of like the equation.
You don't need to think about the equation, all you need to think about is do they meet the two criteria for granting a variance?
Okay.
So, do they have, are there special circumstances that warrant the reduced amount of parking? And are, is there a condition, um, or, or, is there, are they being granted a special privilege? And kind of for both of those things, I would say, they're not really because nobody else has to do that.
And can you walk us through, say, across the street at the Cosmic Roots Cafe? Um, were they to say like, well, now they lose their parking spaces, can we do the same thing and put a cafe in front? Or?
They could, they'd have to apply for it, just, just like they've applied, but, um, I mean, yeah, and you, you, I think Russ would tell you, you're not setting a precedent, you know, every circumstance is different.
Mhm.
Um, you'd look at every, every circumstance, um, a little bit differently, so.
Okay.
And you'd have to make that, those same findings, though.
Okay.
And just, just a note too, in general on parking, you know, the, the fact that we exclude the downtown is generally a good thing, you know? It's, if we were to conform with the typical suburban parking requirements, it would destroy the downtown character, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll just make a comment, there does, there does, uh, certainly seem to be basis for finding A because if all the parking were used as parking, which you have as a parking lot, and, and, uh, that leaves very little, um, use of the type that makes downtown more vibrant. Um, it's not attractive as a parking lot, it doesn't help the city, I think, as a parking lot. So, uh, finding A seems pretty reasonable to me.
I agree.
Agree.
I agree.
Should we move to five?
Oh, four. Four.
Oh, four, whoops.
That was only four, three.
Oh, gosh. Um, or B, I suppose.
Three B, is that what you're saying, Amy? Yeah. Okay.
Oh, that's it, yeah.
Well, four looks pretty straightforward.
Are we done with three B?
I thought we were.
Are we?
Fine, I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, no discussion for me.
It's a unique property, certainly.
Yep.
So four is just, um, the, the site plan finding, which is that the overall site plan comply, complies with the requirements of the zoning code and the general plan in a manner that will not substantially depreciate property values in the vicinity or unreasonably interfere with the lawful use and enjoyment of other properties in the, in the vicinity or endanger the public health, safety and welfare. Sorry, that's missing from the finding, and welfare.
And we're presuming people will drink beer responsibly to the final aspect of that.
We got a problem with a lot of businesses if that, if we can't assume that.
I would say the opposite to A is true, it looks like there's an upgrade on that corner.
Mhm.
For us beer drinkers.
But that's not within our purview as a planning commission.
To drink beer?
Not during our meetings anymore.
No. Uh, yes, I agree.
Not anymore.
So the-
Sure, that was time.
So the, the discussion point I have on item four, I don't know if the lighting is appropriate here or on item six? Does this fall under the code or architectural review?
Sorry, the-
Oh, I think you're right, six. Does the lighting comment?
Yes, yeah, that's really the, the lighting is attached to the building, so it would fall under the architectural review component, is that what you mean?
Oh, yeah, whether, was it code compliant because of the, I guess that was light industrial zoning that that lighting was in before? The lighting requirements for downward is, I know there's some requirement in code, so I'm asking-
Yes, oh, yes, uh, and I can, if you want, I can pull them up, but they're slightly different from what we were looking at before because this is in the historic district, but, um, a lot of those same, that's the same language.
That would be good if you could clarify that.
Actually, I'm sorry. I don't think there are separate lighting, there's separate signage standards, but there might not be separate lighting standards. So it should be the same, actually, I'm sorry.
I think the, the same standards apply to all, all businesses.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, you're right, do you want me to bring that up?
Um, I, I've, I've got it in front of me, if it's the same, if it's the same place in the code, I've-
It is, I'm sorry, yes. Seventeen, oh, I didn't even-
Seventeen eighty.
Well, seventeen eighty is, it's all, it's all-
Yeah, two on five, yeah.
The building lighting was part of our small group discussion with you guys, and then we went back and changed, changed that as well because we showed a picture, you could see the light bulb and everything, recessed into the picture.
And in general, I think it's, I appreciate it's all, you've made a bunch of great improvements to the lighting, I think it's gone all in the right direction. Um, my last request, I wouldn't make this a requirement, um, but just in general, I think that- My last request, I wouldn't make this a requirement, but just in general, I think that a fixture that couldn't be directed, you know, if there's an option to move things, I think they tend to get moved. You know, not everybody's going to be aware of the requirements, and they think this looks a little dark over here, or something like that. So in, in general, my preference would be to have something that were fixed, so it could not be directed, you know, away from that downward configuration, which is what.
The safety lining in the back, you're talking?
Yes, yeah.
I've got an alternate fixture that is also dark sky compliant and not movable at all.
That's like a wall pack fixture, which are, which are wall-mounted, sort of reverse sconces, essentially. They shine downward and.
Sounds, sounds like, I don't really know the lighting terminology, but it sounds like what the other ones.
It's fixed, it's just now even fixed.
The white box, yeah.
I think, I think that would be a great improvement, just to make that.
Human error.
Make it impossible to mess up.
Well.
I mean, I think it tends to stay really just focused.
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate that you want to do that.
So we might as well get one that does that.
Yeah.
Well, given the size of it, it seems like a wall-mounted fix thing would totally do the trick.
Yeah.
But it's much better than it is now, because it's just a dark, narrow area.
Oh, yes, but I mean, a, a fixed thing like, like what we're discussing now would serve your needs really well, just because it's such a narrow area, you wouldn't really be tempted to unless somebody got some idea to move it into a way that, into a direction that disturbs somebody nearby.
Right, I would say there aren't anybody, but yes. I mean, unless you went up.
Yeah, that, that's.
Completely up, like, up. So we'll take it to heart that we got a fixed down, so nobody will be tempted.
Great, thank you. That was my only discussion point.
All right.
And then the, and the, the site plan, the site plan also includes the, the, the outdoor lighting, the landscape lighting, which is separate from the architectural review, so that's in this section.
Right, and I think in, in general, when I looked through, everything was now downward and was great, so.
Right, so I think that's, those concerns have been thoroughly answered. So we're on to five.
We are, so that's the sign, so I pulled up the sign, there's two signs proposed. This is the one on Spring Street, the one I've got here, ah, sorry, that did something.
What?
My memories, my computer memories is like. Okay, so this is the sign that's going on the, it would be arched above the, the, the entrance along Spring Street, and it is eight by three, so twenty-four square feet, and it's, this one's one-sided.
Comments? I'm have, I like the one on the side.
Oh, thanks, I'll pull it up.
Let me just interrupt you, Peter, are there any questions about this, of the, of the applicants from the commission? Just. Okay, yeah.
Okay. The, our sign ordinance talks about, first of all, fixing to a building, and you can see where that works on the other streets. The building is set back, but it's not set back that far, so, and also, the, the style of the arch and the sign is not out, not in keeping with the general sign designs that we have. You know, some of them are fancy, some of them look old-fashioned, and some of them are just plain rectangular. But with the, with the frame, I'm thinking that this does not meet the requirements that we have in downtown for signage. And then I looked at the picture, and I agree, there's a little, there's a little hanging sign on the building. Probably could be larger, you know, that sort of thing, but the fencing, I like the fencing, and it's low, you can see over it. You can see all of the chairs and tables, which are a good announcement of what it is. So if there is some way to not use that large entrance, or at least get the sign back on the, on the porch roof, or some other, or, and have it maybe correspond to the style of the one on the side.
There will be trees as well in front of the building.
There are trees on the walkway.
Right, that's why if it's on the surface of the building, it most likely would be obstructed from seeing us, from Spring Street, just due to the landscaping that we're going to be putting up.
Okay.
So this is the entryway from Spring Street, walking, you'd walk underneath this.
Yeah, I understand that.
There'll be trees on the side of it.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm having a problem with, that it's structurally different than we have generally with the architecture downtown. I think if we look at it from that point of view, that it's an old town, you know, we try to, try to keep the more modern components out of downtown and out of our signs. So reducing it in size, I don't have any problem with the, with the language, but.
I have a question, Peter, the, the Broad Street Books, which is not Broad Street Books anymore, at the top of the.
Sure.
Broad Street, so they have a trellis, they have four posts coming up, and they have a canopy.
You're, you're talking about where Cosmos Spa was, I think, right? Yes, okay, yeah.
And they painted it, and they put the new fence, and it's dark and everything.
Yeah.
And then they have posts coming up, and then that trellis structure over it.
And similarly, sorry to interrupt.
But I was just thinking of other places in town.
Ikes, Ikes has the trellis, and they had a sign hanging from the trellis as well, right? Am I correct?
Yeah, I think you're right.
Yeah.
And, and that's, I guess that's a comparable situation too, because the tree very much blocked that building, blocks.
That huge cherry tree.
And they do have the sign on the side, on the alleyway, I forget the name of the street.
York.
York, thank you.
And I thought of those, I thought of those comparable situations, but in terms of what, what those, what those things are, like the, the trellis over, I don't know the, the current name of the business, but the trellis is a trellis, it's a well-understood thing that would be on the outside of a yard, it doesn't, there's nothing that's, that, that looks like it's like, doesn't look like it's trying to communicate anything to us, it would be a natural fit for a sign to hang from that. It would be the, and the same with the, with Leica's too. It's a very trellisy situation. My, my aesthetic impression of this is, is, so, taken as a whole, it's a, it's a really great design. I mean, there's a, there's a stellar design team involved here. But with the, with the tim, with the timber-y connections, it's a very robust structure. It, it, it's, the whole thing is kind of a sign, and it, it conveys the, the aesthetic of built, rue-built, strong. It's, it's, it's a, it's a strong branding statement, and not an inviting trellis into a courtyard. So it's very built, with all the details, and again, they're lovely, but my opinion is it's a very strong statement, and a bit, I, I, I don't, I won't use a descriptor, but. I think, I think to what, what, and, and the point is, is, is well-taken, that, that hopefully, you know, when the trees leaf out, it'll be lovely, and it would block view, you know, the view of a sign that's mounted to the building, or hanging from the, the overhang, so, so some other, like, approaches.
Called for. Yeah, what, and what I was getting to also, robust, you, you brought up terms that I was thinking of, but I couldn't get the words. But the, the style of the fences, you know, we're going to have, and if, if we end up with that rock and, and the railing.
The steel railing.
I think, I think that really looks good, it's very attractive, it's, it's very Nevada City and local and all that stuff. So I, that, that as a design element is very attractive, and what I was thinking is, maybe the trellis thing. I'm not sure how to design it, it's not my, certainly not my field, but something, something that reflected and was a compliment to that really nice fence design, I think would be attractive. And it, and then you'd have a sign that's forty feet wide, advertisement. And by the way, you know, I don't think tourists and locals will have a hard time finding a brew house in downtown. It's, so I, I'm not sure you need that large honking sign to get, to get people to come to it, and I, you know. I think, and what you're doing with the building is going to be attractive, so I think the whole package is going to be good, and this one doesn't fit with the whole package.
So just to be clear, is it, is it the framework that's holding it, or is it the sign itself, or you're saying both of them?
I would, I would say, my reaction was to both of them, because it changes, you know, the, the timbers are different than the fencing, different than the design on the building.
If the wood was steel, because, I mean, we could incorporate the steel fencing to come into and be attached, like welded to it, to those beams, and then they could be steel beams, so it just, it's.
You figured the wood would be less aggressive, and be more natural fitting towards the fencing.
But it can be.
But I think you established, pardon me, I think you established a really good architectural view with, with the fencing. So, so whether, to my, to my uneducated, or eyes, I think duplicating that railing pattern would, would fit, and it would be open, it's, you know.
Would we still be able to hang the fence over in that, in that manner, if we had the, the fencing kind of.
Mean an entrance?
And come up and over like that, so if it was all in rue-ous.
A little more trellisy.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the fencing that looks like the bridge could come over and just have thinner, smaller, and almost be a trellis-looking thing, but with, with a sign.
And then I, I think you could.
Could we then have a sign close to the road if it was more trellisy?
If the rest of the commissioners agree, it seems to me a good solution, but, you know, I'm not an architect. But also, I would say that the, then the size of the sign itself would be out of scale.
Well.
It's within that, this sign.
I'm not arguing.
Peter, I need to, I want to jump in, because whether or not it, it feels out of scale, what are we legally able to opine on here, if they are within the limits of our guidelines, right?
Well, we're, we're in architectural review, and I'm not, if, I'm arguing that the, going to the full length of twenty-four square feet with the, with the framing offsets that, the arc, the fencing architectural standard. So if we, if we had, if we took that, that same pattern, and have an arch or a walk-in with a smaller sign, I think you.
So, so what you're really saying is just make the sign smaller?
No, I want to interrupt, I think Rod may have a regulatory point to make.
I do, thank you, yeah, I think specifically, the, the basis for our discussion is within the sign guidelines, which note the scale of the sign, you know, should be essentially in proportion, you know, to the building and the setting as well. So I think, I think that's probably the basis that some of these comments about the size are coming in on, which would give us some flexibility.
But do we, do we have strict numbers on the proportion and what that means, or is that the feel?
No, it's.
That's the point, this is one of those, this is one of those things.
It's a feeling argument.
Where it's not a number, right? As is a lot of the architectural guidelines, right?
Right, right.
There are not strict numbers.
That's why we have architectural review and sign review. If, if, if it, if it seems that in context, the, the maximum sign area is too large, then we can make a determination that it is, if it feels out of scale, or, or overbearing.
So you're giving me better words to work with. Yes, you know, I, I think.
I like claws.
Yeah.
It looks muscular, and I, I, and it's not a, it's not like a categorical what condemnation of the design, just in context, it feels very twenty-twenty-three, frankly, it has, it has a very twenty-first century take on historic e-feeling things, but it feels very contemporary, overall.
I think, to me, the one specific element that probably does that more than anything is that logo, which overlaps from, you know, the, the separate hanging sign with the word, you know, integrating up into the, into the arch, gives it, makes it overall feel larger, you know? If you look at the signs around here, typically, you know, they are things that are a distinct sign, piece of wood or whatever it is, that have a separation from their.
Just to be clear, the top of the B logo, that full.
It sort of pulls, yeah, exactly, pulls it all in.
That entire rectangle, that's our twenty-four square feet, so there is a lot of void in that twenty-four square feet, but I.
But we're talking more about the, you know, giving the contextual setting exactly, and how it feels, and getting to Todd's point.
The numbers in the code, but I understand.
And getting to Todd's point about that twenty-first century feeling.
So, so again, sometimes a twenty-four foot, square foot sign is just too much in context. And it's a very, it's a very, it's a very focused message too, I, I again think the whole arch is a message. It feels, it feels very brandy, like it, it's like, this is our flagship business, which I.
Isn't that a good thing? I feel like, I feel like these are positives.
Except, except, yes, except in, in consideration of the, of the surrounding neighborhood, which is also one of our considerations.
What would you like to see?
You know, may I drop in here?
Yeah.
I think, I think we had a, an option, if, if we talk about our chairs comment, architectural comment, going to using the frame, putting a frame with the same pattern as the fence, I think that makes together a much better statement to people walking by. And then, and I, I think in that context, the sign would get smaller.
Right.
You know, and let the arch, you know, the, the, the steel framing take over. And I, you know, advertising is, you know, is anybody walking by, will they, A, know the name of it, and what's going on? And in this case, with the corner and all the tables out there, I think it's going to be real, and you'll probably have beer signs in the windows, or something, so I, no, okay.
I would generally eliminate the ones.
Okay.
But I mean, you know, during the day, when we're closed, and nobody's in there, you might not know what that business is without.
I'm not saying not have a sign, I'm saying in proportion to the railing geometry.
Well, I have a question. So you guys can see on your computers the, the option with the stone, and then there's sort of stone columns, if you want to call them that, to hold the gate. We could do something like coming out of the top of those stone columns, could be the same size steel that is holding the other sign, and go up and, you know, do something that has the sign.
Two entrances with the, with that type of.
They came up on both sides of the gate, that gate that goes in off of Spring Street is the double gate, it's the main entrance, it's seven feet, two, three and a half foot panels, and then maybe on those stone columns, we just do something that, like you're describing, comes out of the fencing and comes out of the stone, and.
Yeah, I'm seeing this trellis fence that's already here, and something that comes up the side.
Seems like a productive.
Comes right up out of the.
That seems like a good direction, because it grows out of the design more organically.
So, and, and I am curious, because I'm, to, to clarify for my own self, but also if I'm not hearing it, perhaps you're not, does the commission also have, I'm, I'm a little bit torn on how I feel about the arch, and I agree with Rod that the logo does add an extra element to it that doesn't really correspond with other signage in town, and I understand why you put it there, but it is definitely the least historical-looking element there. So I wonder, for their own clarity, do we want to ask them to make something that looks more like a trellis, that it's flat on top, and it's got right angles, or is the arch acceptable? Do we want to talk about the arch?
Not being a designer, yeah, I would, I would like, maybe there's two options. I think, I think once you start using that same fencing pattern, whether it's an arch or straight across, I think it doesn't, I don't think it matters for the purpose. The arch, arch would be nice, but you're going to see through it, so it's not as blocking as that.
Yeah, I mean, I can definitely do a couple variations of it, because it's, it's a little bit like.
So they're talking about bringing the fencing out the post.
Kind of poking in the dark here a little bit with ideas, so maybe if I come up with a few different variations of that. So maybe if I come up with a few different variations of that, of how it hangs, you know. Squared off look we played with, but it just looks so like, like Legos, which is very square. The arch definitely like more made it look more like, trying to have an entrance way that looks more like, yes, please come in and enjoy yourself kind of.
Well, and there is, I mean, there are, I can think of plenty of examples of metal trellises that arch. Perhaps if you actually made it a trellis itself, like even if it's only the width of the fence, if it's stone, I think, like you would provide an extra element, but also give you the opportunity to grow a flowering vine up it or something beautiful that, yeah.
Definitely a great way to, to do hawk minds, which we've talked about doing, growing hawks in there and things like that. So we're happy to revise. We just need a little bit of guidance. I don't want to keep adding things that are like not in the realm of.
Well, I think, I think we can move forward. There's, you know, there's, there's, there are very good, there are very good designers on that, at that table. And I, I hope this is enough general direction. And if we could, we could move forward with other aspects of this application and then, and then continue the sign approval.
That one sign, but approve the other one.
Oh, yeah, let's discuss that. Anybody have an issue with the?
Can you bring up the, the sign on the actual building, please, Amy?
Yes, thanks.
On, there's not one on the building. There's one on, it was on the post.
I thought that there was one hanging from the front of the building.
There is. It's hanging next to the entrance, I believe.
It's on Pine Street, right?
Yeah.
There's a, there's a freestanding post. Is that what you're talking about?
There it is.
There's nothing on the, the building.
There it is, okay.
So that's from a pre-existing.
Yeah, I did, there in my bag.
So this is where there was already a pre-existing sign hung from the same post from the previous business.
It's light and it's airy and it does the job and it fits with your other architecture.
And I would just add to me.
I don't see any problem with it.
With that logo integrated into the, the rectangle, the sign itself, it, it doesn't make it as impressive, so to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe even use it just to, as the B in your brew bill or your brew house?
Or I was thinking brew, then that, and then hawks. I put it in the middle.
Personally, I think it's too busy, but I would have to see it.
So what I heard, though, is that we're okay with it being not on the building, but being towards the entrance. And we did set the entrance back in.
Yes.
So our entrance is back to two and a half, almost three feet off the sidewalk. So people who come to gather and go in and not be blocking the sidewalk. So it's set back. So what we're hearing is we'll, we'll make it a little less beefy and make it a little more integrated with the metalwork and, but we're okay being on the sidewalk.
And then, then come back with some sign options in terms of their size. If, if you're, if you're really getting, that arch or arch or whatever you're going to do would be part of the sign. I mean, the attractiveness, you know.
And it always helps to have it in the context of.
I was just going to say, we didn't have time to take that file. It's a different file type than.
Yeah, I won't work on your program.
Oh, you're talking about why, why the detail of the sign is shown separately? Yeah, in context.
It should be sitting in this picture.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Trees and everything else, it doesn't, it actually doesn't feel quite.
So far, yeah, it blends better.
We'll be able to do it all together, collaborate.
Yeah, so overall, if it were to be more organically included into the, into the wall system and the design of that.
Get a full picture of it.
Yeah.
So we can just pull them out of these two right here?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, just come right up. But if we need to get the other side done.
So that's a breakback.
Yeah, that'll, that'll be, that, that approval will be a continuance item. But, but sign, but sign two, no issues with sign two. I don't, I have, it looks great.
I don't have a.
Do you want to see colors or are you guys just trusting us?
On what?
Re-material samples.
Let's see colors, yeah.
Don't want to get up there and say, where's those down now?
Or wedding. I hate char truce.
Me too, that's why we're not using it. So copper, stainless, powder coated steel for the colors, the black and the white.
And that's, is that sign two?
You're going to be using all of these?
That's all, that's both signs.
Yeah. So the B always, it's always copper, like even on my shirt here where it's, we've always used copper and stainless steel.
So that's, that's actually a layered construction. It's not a printed thing. It's a, it's a.
Yeah.
A built thing.
Yeah. It's a welding business on the side as well.
On the side.
I don't call that side.
So you guys actually know how to connect metal together?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, stop in, get a beer, get a sign.
Get a $20,000 brew tank.
Yeah.
So we are at.
So you just went through five, which is a sign. So six is just the architectural review.
Okay, just.
And that's, that's really taking into consideration that building alterations.
What kind of trees are you going to plant?
Tree type.
Trees.
Um, still thinking about that, but probably something like vitellia, which is a linden. You know, leaguts.
Yeah.
So something like that or a tulip tree, tulip pepper. Something that's going to be tall and branchy.
Just don't plant it under, well, we don't have to worry about that in town.
A P G and E line?
Please don't plant it under a P G and E line.
What a different place that would be with trees.
That's what we're hoping.
Just like the picture.
Yeah.
I guess the other, I, one, one, this is totally off the book, I guess, but I would just encourage you to think about drought resistant trees, especially with hardwoods as they drop branches and they're higher maintenance and the world we live in.
I have a question. Did we, we talked about the, the fences. There was two options. And I talked about my favorite already.
Yeah, you showed your hand.
I showed my hand. Good taste. But anyway, so do we, where do we, we need to make a decision on that because we have two options.
What, on the fences?
Yeah.
The, so the way I wrote, I wrote the condition that they can do either option. And there's actually three options. But if you.
Wait, wooden fence.
Are you talking about the walls?
There was a, there was a two option fence, fence, right? Running per, a wall running perpendicular to Spring Street, right? Depending on P G and E's.
From the western border.
Right, so that would be either.
Amy was also on the northern side.
Right.
Again, South Pine, which gets, kind of gets dropped off of the notes, but it's in two locations.
Yeah, that, that, what was already approved? Yeah, 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 yeah. I thought, sorry, I thought you guys moved on to what you guys.
We approved the fence. We didn't approve the type, did we?
We approved the fence and the wall being either wood or concrete slurry over with cinder block.
Okay, and then you're proposing steel with the, with the metal.
He's talking, he's talking about the ones that are on the streets.
Oh, the one on the street or stood, just these two that we see pictured up there.
So the difference is.
I see.
There's two different views. There's one kind of one on Spring for the rock wall.
Oh, okay, that's what.
And then the top one is just the concrete.
Ah, okay, okay, okay.
So we're going for concrete or rock?
No, we are. I mean, I guess it's part of six.
Well, we, that comes, that comes back to us then, right?
Mm-hmm, yes, this, this, these ones are your.
So we need to make a decision about which fence we want.
Or allow both options.
Or allow, so one concern that I have.
You mean the perimeter fence along the.
On Spring Street, on the sidewalk.
Walls, shall we?
Yes.
Yes.
The low walls, yeah.
Low walls.
Low walls, the low walls.
I, I love the idea of the rock wall. And I'm also concerned about the permanence of it with another business coming in. Like, I think it kind of, I wonder if it creates an inflexible environment for future owners. Not that like it can't be moved or anything, but also how that would be navigated if council denies your parking variance.
It wouldn't have felt our parking variance, so not. And they're both very permanent with a foundation and rebar and corn.
The, wait, oh, so the other one is going to be concrete. It's not wood. For some reason, I thought that was.
Those two right there.
I see, okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's either block, just to clarify for you.
Thank you.
It's either block with a, with a concrete slurry applied to it to look like poured concrete.
That's the upper white version.
Right, and, and, and that proposal, that proposal is, is, was intended to be similar to the, the building catty corner, the power, the powell house, with those, the low walls, those concrete walls.
Right.
Supposed to be complementary or, or kind of consistent, going that. So both are very permanent.
Yeah, absolutely, right. Well, I like them both. Sorry, Peter.
No, no, the question was going to be, we are, it's part of architectural review, right?
It's part of the site plan review, really, yeah.
Site plan review. So I think we need to pick one or the other or do we, or are we okay with either? I'm not okay with either. I really liked the, the, the bottom one.
Should we do a poll?
Yes.
Well, let's, what, what does Commissioner Brown?
Commissioner Brown is okay with either regarding the wall. I did have a comment back though on the landscaping. I would note in the code that it does say that half of the landscaping is supposed to be drought resistant or native, so.
So one of the conditions is they have to provide the, the wellowed documentation and that's going to require that they have, well, water efficient landscaping.
Okay.
And handling on today's agenda, some information about that, that thing, yeah.
Regarding the wall, regarding the wall, I'm okay with either doing.
And, and I have a, I, I'm a big fan of Dan Reithardt's work. And Dan Reithardt personally, too, although I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a conflict because I don't like him that much. If Dan is watching, I think you're cool. I really do. I, I, the, the stone, the stacked stone version is, is really strong. And I, I, I prefer the, the concrete treatment. It's, I think, more harmonious with the context. I also think that, and these may be interchangeable design details, but the, the sort of peekaboo iron sections with a higher solid wall might be better for noise mitigation. You know, like more solid, more solid wall area, though the, the metal fencing areas are, are leveling at some nice relief. I mean, it's a nice composition. My preference is for, you know, again, the stacked stone is, is beautiful and awesome. And I think in this circumstance, the, the, the concrete would be more harmonious with the area.
Immediately there, but on the other hand.
Yeah, including the, you know, including the powell house.
But just down the street, there's Miners Foundry that.
The stone motif does, to me, seems more like what you see around town. It's more river, you know, rock kind of idea than the things that we see built, stone houses and like that.
And the railing is, and, and the railing teams up with the bridge.
I didn't hear what you said.
We're using that.
The reason why we presented two options is because we do love the stone wall, but the concrete is our original choice. But budget will determine for us on our end what we are able to do.
Obviously, the stone is significantly more expensive.
We are hoping that you will approve both and then we will figure out which one financially is feasible.
We are not supposed to make decisions based on finances, but I do think it is important to consider supporting our businesses when they're starting and giving them the best chance. I, I like both ideas.
It's, like, like you said, there's both around town and I don't think we have to match exactly or contrast exactly with what's across the street.
So it would match somewhere, something.
Yeah, exactly. I think, I think they're both.
And I'm not opposed to the rock either, with a, you know, like a 35% to 40% preference for the concrete treatment.
And I'm 100%.
All on the fence.
Yes, we know.
So, so we have almost made a decision to kick it down the can.
I move to approve both.
It seems like there's traction for both, approval of either.
Right now, that is how I have the condition written in there that they are, so you'd, you'd be modifying the condition if you were going to select one or the other.
Okay, I read that and then still, you know.
You still.
What?
You still got that one, I think.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
At six, wow.
So I think.
That the whole thing?
This discussion is in parallel with us, for us, with the parking mitigation because of cost.
I do know that.
So that is occurring with the city council.
Yeah.
But can this team give a recommendation to seriously?
So there's no formal recommendation?
Consider our parking mitigation suggestions?
I, so I had originally written in to my staff report that they'd be making a recommendation and Sean said that's not appropriate, but they can make comments on your proposal if you'd like. That was what he said.
They know the proposal, do they?
They do not. They have not been, they have not looked at the, in lieu.
Proposal, but just know that the decisions around parking has a lot to do with what other resources are available to do.
And can you remind us again, please, if the parking spaces that you are taking away are currently regularly in use and what conditions they are?
Not for many years.
But you gave us credit for the three that were there.
Yes, yeah, for the three and for the use of the building, you know, just like if you had no parking, you would get credited for some amount of parking that that used. So I think we credited you 14 spaces because you have an existing building with an existing use. I, I think the credit was for.
They're billing us 14.
Oh, sorry, that was.
Slightly different.
Wait, 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 hold on, hold on. We credited you the.
You credited us five, three or five.
Is that five? It was nine altogether.
It was a 19 and then you credited us down to 14, I think.
Yeah, we're down, we're at 14.
Yes, so we credited you five altogether.
There's so many numbers being thrown around. Can someone?
It was eight altogether for the existing building. And then we took away the, the three that they're removing, so they got a credit of five parking spaces.
A credit that they're paying for or?
No, credit that, that they just, their, their use, that are, that demand has not changed. So there is a demand for parking based on their existing use, not the expanded use. And so their, their only additional parking that they're responsible for are the parking spaces they're taking away and the additional, additional use area.
And, and was Tysoe paying for those three spaces as well when they took them away?
They did not. They didn't formally take them away.
Okay.
So, yeah, they, yeah.
They just ripped it off instead of us getting rid of the pavement itself.
Okay.
So we are having to pay for those three parking spots plus nine or 11 more, depending on what city council decides.
Depending on city council's decision, we're currently looking at paying for 14 spots. It's kind of.
I don't understand what the credit for five is then.
We started at 19.
Yes. There are 19 parking spaces on that. No, 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 no.
Where footage comes in.
Based on the demand of their new use, their existing use and their new use, that total demand was 19 spaces. We credited them for five because they, you know, there, there is some amount of use that, that they, they get credit for because that building is there. It's been there for a long time. And then the, then, and we had to subtract from that the three actual on the ground spaces that they were moving.
I'm so sorry. This is, this is, yeah, very new to me. So does a business, say, let's say a restaurant in town, like, with the good delish bish, do they have to pay for parking spaces because they're bringing in traffic as well?
If they're expanding their use, then yes, they would have, we would have to determine what their, their new demand is, what their additional parking demand is.
So like when Three Forks went in, I guess maybe that's not as applicable.
I wasn't here when that first went in, but they have an application in for something similar and they will have to pay for additional parking spaces. They'll be, they'll have the same issue. Their, their space isn't quite as large, so it won't be quite as much demand.
And when they pay for the parking spaces, does it go to building new parking spaces or paying for revenue lost?
It actually goes into a fund. We have a fund for. It actually goes into a fund, we have a fund for, for that purpose, for building new parking spaces around town. Okay.
And, and this...
And once they get built, do they have to stop paying? They, they only pay one, it's a one-time fee. Yeah, 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 it's a one-time fee.
It's a one-time, forty-five hundred dollars per parking spot.
I see, okay, thank you.
And, and this is levied because the, the change is from retail to...
Well, it's still retail.
It's still retail.
The parking ratio is actually the same. There's actually not one for restaurants. We use the retail one for restaurants. There's not a specific parking ratio for restaurants. We use the retail one, but, yes, they're, they're, they would use the same.
Because we're expanding our square footage into the parking lot, it's based off a square footage calculation.
I see.
So we get charged per square foot for a parking spot.
So, so...
So every square footage we're using, we're getting an additional parking spot we're supposed to provide or pay for.
Okay, and so for example, communal cafe, were, were the owners of that building to expand into the hotel space above, they would have to do the same? That, we did look at that, they had, they had an existing hotel use there. Uh-huh. So the determination was that they did not need to expand their, their parking. Okay.
I think you can also look at this. So we have the parking requirement.
Yeah.
We have architecture review, and one could look at it as well, like, is parking in front of a building, you know, consistent with the motherhood style of architecture and all that sort of thing?
Stop this instant.
Yeah, stop it, Ron.
So my point is that I think this is an improvement overall to reduce the parking on-site.
Is it possible, is there anywhere in the discussion about parking that, that outside parking, I mean, the outside use of space, why doesn't have the same requirement as indoor use of space? Like you, it was the same thing, a thousand square feet is for parking spaces and stuff. Isn't outside like kind of...
Well, well, you can fit more people, right? And I, I did try to be reasonable about which spaces, like, calculated, even though our code does say use gross square footage.
Okay.
But, but I think that's why, there's nothing that's, that, yeah, distinguishes between indoor and outdoor. That's why. It does give you the option to do your own parking study and provide documentation to, to say that the ratio is, should be something different. But that, that would've been something you guys would have to provide.
And from my own information, that the, the recovered spaces in front, so now, so now that marked spots that are on, are on, that are on your property weren't accessible, wouldn't be accessible because they were, they, you pull in, so there's no curb parking. So are the recovered spaces credited?
That's part of our proposals, that we recover those.
That's what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
Personally...
That makes, that makes sense.
I think, I also really do appreciate the idea that you're converting a parking space into motorcycle parking because I have seen that happen before.
It's not even an actual parking space right now, it's the driveway to get into the, on the black box.
To access those three spaces.
I see.
It's where the sidewalk ramps down to meet the street level.
Right, you wouldn't want to use that for deliveries or anything?
Before.
Okay.
Literally a brand-new parking space, maybe the only one in town ever.
And I should say, the staff is supportive of using that to, to, you know, credit them another space.
Maybe we should put a plaque on it. Or the last parking place in town. But it would have to conform.
This motorcycle parking, broaching by rivers.
Don't go there. Okay, are we up to six, architectural review?
I would also, I would be happy to, to add some words in for city council.
So are we at, let's see, are we at?
We're at six.
We just finished six.
So Amy, can we, do we have to approve each one of these separately, or can we say, you know, one through four is a group and six is included, and then five is gonna be a bring-back?
I would, well, five, you were approving one of them, right? One of the signs and not the other. Right. I, I would prefer that we go through each one of them, and I, I can, I can read through it if you'd like.
Walk us through the process, please.
Okay, so first one with, is SEQA, determine the project is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to section 15332 of the California Environmental Quality Act, guidelines for projects characterized as infill, making findings A through E in the staff report. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Armshar is absent. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Zant?
Yes.
Commissioner Cobden?
Yes.
And Chair and I, and Armshar is recused, not absent.
Yes.
Sorry. Okay, and then the second one. Approve the use permit amendment subject to, or sorry, it's not an amendment, so, approve the use permit subject to conditions of approval with the added condition that I read through the previous application from the city engineer. Let's see, making findings A through C pursuant to section seventeen point eight, eight point two zero of the City Municipal Code.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Zant?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cobden?
Yes.
Chair and I?
Yes.
And Armshar is recused. Let's see, we're on three, right? Okay. Planning Commission approves the variance request for reduced parking, making findings A and B pursuant to section seventeen point eight, eight point zero three zero of the City Municipal Code.
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Zant?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cobden?
Yes.
Chair and I?
Yes.
Planning Commission approves the site plan, subject to conditions of approval, including both options for the, the, the wall options, pursuant to section seventeen point eight, eight point zero one zero, making finding A in the staff report.
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Zant?
Okay.
Vice Chair Cobden?
Yes.
And Chair and I?
Yes.
That's an almost yes. But legally, it's okay.
I mark you down as an I.
Sure. I knew you would.
Commission approves the sign application for the pole sign only, the, the other sign will have to come back. So for the pole sign only located on the Pine Street side at three hundred Spring Street, making findings A and B in the staff report.
I'll just throw in, it's, it's sign two.
Sign two, yes, sure, yes, yeah.
Just like when it's named as that.
So moved. So moved.
I'll second.
Read that again.
The Planning Commission approves sign two in the application, the freestanding pole sign located on the Pine Street side.
Okay.
At three hundred Spring Street.
Thank you.
Did I get a second? Sorry. Nye?
Yes. I think so.
All right, Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Zant?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cobden?
Yes.
Chair and I?
Yes.
Okay, last one.
And can, can we add a, should there be language about continuing approval of sign one in that motion?
We can add that, they don't, there's no reason we need to continue a sign application, they can just, whenever they, whenever they have it together, they can bring it back. Oh, really?
Start building and come back to that sign, sort of thing?
Not, you can build, not build the, yeah, not so the...
Not the arch, but like we can...
You can install the other one, the other one is approved, yeah.
Although it seems likely that a revision will occur well before you get in the red.
Yeah, we'll be working on that tomorrow, so.
So, let's see, Planning Commission acting as Architectural Review Committee approves the Architectural Review Application as conditioned for the proposed exterior alterations located at three hundred Spring Street, Nevada City, making findings A and B in the staff report.
So moved. Second.
Sorry, lost my place. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Zant?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cobden?
Yes.
And Chair and I?
Yes.
Nice. Congratulations.
You're in business.
I'm looking forward to the opening.
Yes, well, one, one big step.
Yes, one big step.
Well, we need to finalize, probably need to have another meeting with Sean, finalize what we're bringing, because the, yeah, the one dumpster idea is probably not working, so.
What's the, do you have a hopeful opening date?
We have to see what city council says first.
He was ready for some beer.
Yeah, I was, it's moved many times.
Yeah.
We would love...
We would like to have it open.
Before they have a spring, but, you know.
Okay, so we have to go to a meeting with Sean.
I think we should probably, yeah, I think they're, they're setting something up for next week, I think, so.
And then resubmitting for the sign?
Yeah, so that'll be, just before my March sixteenth meeting, so by March sixth, if you can, can get me something?
You want one option or multiple options?
I've got a couple ideas already, I've got a couple ahead.
You can, you can bring in multiple options. Not too many, but...
Look how long it, we took with two.
But I think, you know, using some of the direction we got from them today.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for getting into this, it's, it's gonna be a good, good project.
Oh, I haven't seen Peter so excited for a while.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think he does, too.
Outdoors, in the spring, of course, in the summer.
And you are considering non-alcoholic things, right?
Oh, yeah, there's, there's gonna be plenty of soft drinks and even, there's an idea of non-alcohol beer and food.
What about Hopswater?
About what?
Hopswater.
Um...
People are doing it.
We talked about that as well. We're talking about that as well, yeah. We're definitely gonna have several any options for, for those, not just soda.
Yeah, it's really good, it's really good stuff.
Yeah, I love it, too.
Not sugary, but not...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hopwater?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Hopswater?
Hopwater, Loganitas makes one, and somebody, there's a good brand making it.
Yeah, you can get it at SPD.
It's really refreshing.
Yeah, there's one called Hop WTR. I'd like to buy a barrel.
Okay, there's like two or three versions, I know at SPD a lot, but...
It's not like fake beer, it's a completely different kind of thing with a very nice flavor.
Yeah, it's like a slightly hot flavored water with a little bit of sweetness to it, it's sort of like...
Yeah, and usually carbonated.
Right, maybe a tuna, yeah, carbonated.
No alcohol, but yeah, the idea is, you know, we're, we're trying to bring in...
Break the kids in.
Some wine.
We know.
Not just beer, but yeah, we want, you know, I've got children as well, I want people to be able to have their families.
Are dogs gonna be allowed on the patio?
And I got a dog.
Oh, boy. Oh, boy.
Not just allowed, encouraged.
Great.
Well, best of luck.
Love a boot at this time.
Best wishes with the city council.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
May I ask for a bio break?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, go ahead, then.
Oh, bio break.
Yeah, thank you. I was gaveling.
R H.
Regional housing.
Regional housing needs assessment.
Thank you, needs assessment. So, so we're required to produce a certain number, or we are allocated with a, an attempt to meet.
A is allocation.
Meet a certain number of low income, very low income, moderate and above moderate housing. So, we did, we're doing pretty well on low income housing because of cash ins field. And then here I wrote for the sixth cycle, this is the sixth cycle for the housing element. We have a total of one hundred and thirty-five housing units that, and that's broken down amongst those, those, those various income groups, to be completed at the end of the cycle, which ends in two thousand and twenty-seven. In two thousand and twenty-two, the city issued certificates of occupancy for fifty-six dwelling units. And at that point, that is when the, when HCD has determined you have met the, the need.
Is when you, you get certificates of occupancy?
When they're built and people can move in.
Which is different from having the potential which, which was in the.
Yeah, so when we're doing the housing element, we have to show that we have enough, enough zoning to accommodate the housing that we will have to make. And if we don't, it's at that time that we have to do rezone if it's, if we need to. If we don't have enough zoning to accommodate the, the variety of housing that we're, we, we need to provide. So, we, we issued fifty-six certificates of occupancy. And that's primarily due to cash-ins, fifty-one of those are for cash-ins. So fifty of those are in the, the low and very low income category. One is above moderate because it's the manager's unit and there's not a deed restriction on that one. And then besides that, there were six dwelling units, sorry, sorry. Besides that, there were two. Okay, that's the breakdown of the cash-ins one. I guess I didn't put in what, what, but we had six essentially, five or I guess five other units, mostly ADUs. Do we have any brand-new dwellings? Can't think of any, but we do have, I do have it all listed here. The most important, there's a lot of tables that we have to submit to HCD, but the most important one, the one that has all the information, is the table A two. My thing does not like my. So it's on page sixty-six of your packet. And I'm gonna zoom in here. So I can read it, because it's teeny-tiny. So, and what this shows is, since the housing cycle started in the, the end of two thousand and nineteen, what we've, what we've entitled, so either through like the Grove, or anytime we've approved some, you know, a, a new housing unit. Or, and then, and then the next tab over highlighted in the yellow shows what we've issued. So they've submitted plans, we've approved those plans, they can start building. And then the last column in the green is what actually got built and has a certificate of occupancy now.
And what are the green highlights? Those are, we need to get to those?
They, so these, these are, this is a macro, it's, it's got macros in the Excel sheet and some of them I can't change. They seem to highlight them green when you didn't add information. I think those were, those new, trying to remember. But I had no control over, my computer's not liking.
Sounds like.
But I, I didn't have any control over the color. They just, they highlighted them green, but it seemed to be when it was highlighted yellow that it meant it was, it was not. So they, at the very end, it allows you to check for errors and we, I didn't come up with any errors.
So the only ones that are green are ones that want information because the green ones don't have any, any, any things in them, any entries in them.
That must be what it is, but they, the, they, they, oh, oh, because I think what that is is we have not issued a certificate of occupancy. We'll be expected, we'll be expected to move forward with those next year. So the green is, it just means they have, it hasn't come to completion yet. So we'll have to add in more information next year or the year after as the, the building plans progress.
And.
I'm curious, Amy, one of the, I just thought of this, that place that burned over here a few years ago? Is there anything happening? It's not on the list, right?
It is on the list because it, we issued a building permit, but there is, see, and there's a column way off to the, the, in the blue highlight, there's additional information about it. And that is one that I listed. So we've issued them a building permit, we have not, they have not started building yet. So they have, don't have a certificate of occupancy. But I did have to note that it's destroyed. Oh, I think that's why, I was thinking there were six units, there's only five because that one. No, never mind.
Is this the one on Spring Street?
Yeah, I'm not seeing the Spring Street address on the list.
The Spring Street one? Which building?
Yeah, that's the one I'm, the, there's the two buildings.
Well, I say it burned like ten years ago.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a number of years.
Well, that would not be, show up in this housing cycle, so.
Oh, you're talking about Broad Street, which burned more recently?
I was thinking you were talking about the Broad Street.
That I seen too, I can't think of the Spring Street one.
The, the apartment complex over there.
Yeah, exactly.
It's next to the crossing of American Hill, or is it Bennett?
It's Bennett, yeah, Bennett and Spring. If, so that, that all was destroyed before, maybe before we even started reporting to, I don't know, when, when was that burned down?
Before my time, so it's, it's probably, I'd say probably eight years ago, something like that.
I think, it feels like ten.
Could be longer, maybe ten, twelve.
I was, yeah, I wasn't in town at that time.
Oh, wow.
It was, it was just a floor.
Certainly not, yeah, certainly not in this housing cycle.
It's not there, I'm just, I was more curious if anything is.
I think if they ever rebuilt it, we'd have to talk about what, what happened, like it didn't have to.
Right.
Yeah. But I don't know if it would count, it's interesting, I don't know if it would count as a net loss of units if they didn't build back.
Well, it's not in any count now, right? It's not an existing unit.
No, no, it's not, yeah, it's not.
Hopefully if we built, it would be a credit, I guess is what I'm getting at.
I, I wonder, actually. But we'll get there.
It sounds like it's a moot anyway.
It's moot right now, anyway.
Nothing's happening.
So, anyway, this is probably the most important page. Their macros were driving me crazy and I can't override them.
Sixty-six?
Sixty-six, yes, is, it's got all those categories. So what, what we've issued this year, what we've, sorry, what we've entitled, what we've issued, and then what we've actually seen built.
There's, there's no news to date on the Grove or anything?
No, I'm gonna be providing, so the council's asked me to reach out to the Grove developer and the one for Gracie Commons and ask them where they are, so.
Has the Grove, is it still owned by the original group?
Yes, yeah, yeah, it is. So I will hopefully have some kind of report for council at their first April meeting, March meeting, sorry, March.
When we redid that, the Grove, we requested that, that path that goes up, remember they used the path in the park as a element of affordability? They could walk to SPD, remember that?
Yes, that was there.
And so we asked and he agreed that we, that would be dedicated to the city.
Yeah, he did agree to keep, I haven't, I'm, I'm the liaison for that project. I haven't heard anything from them for almost two years.
Yeah.
But they, there was that discussion that Lori spearheaded, I think, about having publicly accessible trails that go through it.
Yeah, well, if they were using, if they were using it as an example of affordability, remember? You could walk to SPD rather than drive, so it was, that was the rationale. So isn't it on us, is it on us to ask them to dedicate it and do we start the process?
If we made that a condition of approval, they, they would start that, so yeah.
But we did not make, well, we did, we made the, the paths a condition of approval, but not affordability.
No, 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 the path, we.
Yeah, okay.
They said, we use the path, they can walk to SPD.
Right.
Cut down on cars. And we said, okay, well, if that's a condition, then the people should be, you, should have right to it, should be, the public has a right to the path.
They were reluctant, but I think they agreed to a, a deed atisement or something like that.
I don't remember.
You should go back and look.
Look at the conditions and see what they're.
Would you go back and look and see?
As I recall, it was also pushing for bike lanes, which they were reluctant. It would have to be in the conditions to, in order for them, in order for us to enforce, enforce it.
Okay, would you just, I mean, we were clear about it. Whether it got into the right column or not, I don't know.
Okay.
But is that gonna help us here? I mean, I don't, it doesn't look like those are affordable.
Somebody mentioned Grove and that, oh.
Well, so.
There are some moderate income units in that.
None of them are deed restricted, so none of them will count toward our RENA numbers. Except for in the moderate, or the above moderate category, actually.
So wait, what's the deed restriction requirement?
So, so HCD, and Sean has some good ideas for next time if we have a, a project that proposes something other than a deed restriction for, so HCD essentially only, only accepts deed restrictions in terms of ensuring that it's gonna be affordable to low income. So it needs to be, it needs to meet low income or very low, it needs to meet all those, those categories. So they have to add deed restrictions, which Cashin's Field does. They have deed restrictions for all of their units to meet extremely low, low and very low income. So where we're, we're actually gonna fall short, this housing cycle probably, is in our moderate and our above moderate. So moderate's a kind of a hard one. Above moderate basically means everything else, everything that's not deed restricted. It doesn't matter if it's a three-hundred-square-foot house. Everything that's not deed restricted is gonna fall into our above moderate because there's no way for us to guarantee it's gonna stay affordable.
So in to qualify for moderate, it needs to be deed restricted, to, to varying income levels?
But moderate, moderate income is, it's, it can be varying based on your family size, but moderate changes.
It has to do with the average income of California.
Which, which changes like.
Actually of Nevada County.
Of Nevada County, okay.
Yeah, so there's a.
So the bar can change, right?
It does, it changes every year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I would like to add, I guess, a question slash statement. Correct me if I'm wrong, Nevada City does grant, what is the deal where if you agree that your ADU will be deeded as affordable?
Yeah.
Don't we waive permitting fees on that?
So it's interesting, yes, that, we do have that, that ability for you to.
For anyone listening.
However, so, yes, we, if you de-strict your, your ADU, you can waive your fees, you actually can waive your connection fees too. So it can, it's, it's pretty significant.
That is significant.
However, HCD also came, you know, we had to adopt an ADU policy that said if you have an ADU under seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet, you also, we have to also waive the fees. So that sort of took away the incentive, because now everyone. Yes, so we don't get very many anymore. And it was a pretty good incentive previously.
Yeah.
That, that can be reconfigured though, can't it?
It can, yes, yeah, if we, if we wanted to figure out some other way to incentivize. And if someone wanted to do something over seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet, they could, they could still de-strict it and get the, the mitigation fees waived.
Well, why, why de-strict when you can charge so much money there?
I know, yes, so I think that's the calculation people are making, because we're hardly seeing it at all.
So what are we doing now?
This is a.
This is just, really just to direct me to send this, well, direct me to take it to council to take, to, to send to HCD.
Okay, so we're just going over it and getting an FYI and.
Yeah, that's essentially, so did you guys know what, where we are with our, our housing and meeting our RENA targets?
And is there anything based on what you've just told us that we need to be considering and prioritizing as we continue with our jobs?
With, with housing, there's not a whole lot we can do. You know, what we do is we rezone when we need to at the, at the, the, when we, when we start the housing cycle. So we need to make sure we have like three acres of R three zoning. Now, if the Grove comes in and their how, their, their units don't end up being affordable, then we will probably be looking at rezoning to some additional R three because we need to, we need to have that R three, those affordable, which, to HCD's, for HCD, they, they figure if you do high density, that's where your affordable housing is gonna go. Even though there's no guarantees, it's affordable unless you de-restrict, so.
And there are options, there, there are options, open, excuse me, hiccups. When we, when we look at the, at the zoning ordinance again, to reconfigure that a bit for more, to put in more like the, the ten percent or thirty percent, is it, it's thirty percent of, of housing needs to be below?
I think it's twenty percent. I wanna say it's twenty.
So we can, we can get more detailed as to income levels or affordability levels. We can get into more detail and, and ask for like extremely low and that sort of thing in the, in the zoning ordinance, can't we?
We can, we can, and, and what Sean is suggesting is if someone wants to do like an affordable by design, that we also get them to commit to bringing back, you know, some kind of report as they're selling it to, to ensure that they're actually meeting the affordable limits, so.
And that would be part of the, but part of the ordinance revision that we're, that we haven't taken action on yet.
Yeah, we don't, well, we could, we could do that at a project, as a project-specific condition. If they're saying it's affordable, we need to make sure, ensure it's affordable, there's a nexus for us to add a condition.
Would HCD accept it though, given that it could resell and at market rate, right?
So I think what Sean was saying is that we probably, we might need to make it like an annual report or something like that.
But it's just a report.
Just a report, HCD does not necessarily have to accept it, but, but apparently they have before, they've accepted those kinds of things, so.
If progress is being demonstrated or something.
When it comes to affordable by design, it doesn't really pan out in the city.
Yeah.
At least not within a three-digit address limit.
And who's gonna report the resale anyway?
Well, they would have, they would have to hire someone to do it, so someone, but yeah, I don't necessarily.
Goes out of business and.
Yeah. I'm not sure, Sean seems to have, have a good idea, but it's just something to be aware of next time if we have a developer proposing something like that. They need to be pretty clear about how they're going to make it actually affordable. Not sort of feel-good affordable.
Just in general, every building project is a unique LLC that's only, exists for the duration of that development.
But you can still condition a project, you know, like, you know, you can require that their HOA, you know, that they form an HOA and that the HOA.
But that's something that continues on, that's my point.
So that's probably, and we do that all the time. And in fact, I think we did that for the Grove. They had, they had certain things, because they have to do some street maintenance, because they've got all private streets and there's some, there's some, and probably trail maintenance and that kind of thing, so.
But there's, of course, there's no guarantee, as Florida has shown that people are gonna maintain things like their condo concrete.
Not just Florida.
But more to Commissioner Cobden's point, so Table D, and that starts on page seventy-three of the staff report, it's, it lists the, a bunch of stuff, like a bunch of policies and things that we, we adopted at the onset of the housing cycle, including, I think it starts on item four, which is, like some of it's just, you know, things like include freed on your, on, on any housing distribution things so that we get their input early on in a project. But then four is the amend the municipal code and it's, I think it, because I have to do it in Excel sheet when I convert it to PDF, a bunch of it blocked off. But I can send you guys the entire spreadsheet if you guys want the Excel sheet. But this, this goes to what I was trying to get done at the December meeting, which was amend the municipal code to meet this, the requirements that we set out for the, for the, with the housing, adoption of the housing element. So there's several policies that we were required to do within, we said we were gonna do this by two thousand and twenty, but then COVID happened, so we're a little behind schedule. But, so.
And then inflation.
I will be bringing that back to you guys, hopefully at a meeting that's not too, too heavy. And I think the feedback I got last time was to come up, and I haven't, I haven't had time to do this, but to come up with, because there was a, one of them was the tree, we have to make it ministerial for tree removal and like essentially the R three designations. So if someone wants to remove trees, the, you guys have to let me approve it. But there's, there's still some, some room for us to add some mitigation standards in there, but we'd have to adopt that as part of the ordinance change.
So when you decide it's, it's a, an appropriate agenda to bring that to, some advance warning and, and preparatory materials would be cool.
Okay, I, yeah, I'll, I'll try and, you know, I'll try to get to you soon. And even if, if we need to continue it, now I just, my, my, my goal is to get it done before this, this cycle ends.
I'm curious, as a, as a categorical question, I guess, how, when we are determining every year the income and basing.
We don't determine it, HUD actually determines it.
Are they, what are they, how are they calculating into the equation second homes owned by out-of-towners?
I'm not sure that they do, I mean.
Because that really throws things off.
So I don't think they take in, this is, I think it's a, it's a criticism of how HCD and HUD works, is that they don't take into account your assets, they only take into account your income. And so someone who has a lot of assets, but not necessarily a ton of income, can qualify for a lot of, a lot of things that, even though they have.
Especially in a community full of retirees. Looking at you.
Gee, maybe I'll start looking for a new house.
Oh, man.
No, we're not moving again.
So, is there anything else you want to call to our attention?
I don't think so, there's a couple, let's see, what did I write in the staff report? There's a couple of things, we're, oh, there, we do have to come up with a, a fair housing ordinance. And so I'll be bringing that too. I didn't bring that up with the municipal code, because it seemed like a lot. But it's, there's a, a model ordinance that we'll just, we'll take from HCD. But it's essentially, it's essentially create a regulations for reasonable accommodation per Federal Fair Housing Amendments Act of nineteen eighty-eight and California Fair Employment and Housing Act Government Code. So we just need to come into compliance with state and federal law on that. And then we'll be doing, this is something I think more Sean's gonna spearhead, but a surplus land review. So we have to look at all the land that the city owns and determine if we need it. And then there's a process, if, if we say we need that land, we can exempt it from having to sell it. So anything we did, we, we figure out we don't need, we have to put it up for sale, is what I understand. And it has, the first right of refusal goes to school districts and to affordable housing developers.
Does that apply to slivers?
Sean said it would not apply to slivers, because they're not actual parcels of land, they're just sort of like these leftover pieces, so.
Yeah, but they're not big enough to do anything usually, yeah.
I mean, a, a lot of these properties that, because there's, there's a table of them in here, but a lot of them are like property that the city owns, but it's like on Sacramento Street and they're like this, and then go down to a creek, so they're.
Yeah.
Difficult to develop, so I don't know if, how feasible they will be, but we have, we have to offer them up anyway.
What about offering them to neighbors?
We, apparently if it's city-owned, we have to first offer them. I think after, if nobody, nobody takes them to the school district and affordable housing developer does not want them, it sounds like we still have to de-strict it for some, for like a certain percentage of affordable housing, but then we can sell it. But then someone would have to do some kind of affordable housing component on there, so.
So they'd be required to be developed in some way?
They wouldn't be required, but if someone was to, if we were to sell it, someone would have to purchase it with that deed restriction on it.
If they, they wouldn't have to develop it, but if they wanted to develop it, they would have to do it.
Yeah, yes, yes.
That's weird, it doesn't do anything technically then, potentially.
Except, except take the liability and the, and the vegetation management problems off of the city's hands and onto the.
But it might make them unattractive to purchase if there's that component on there, but.
An adjacent property owner that might, might, wouldn't for like.
Oh, they just wanted it not for developing.
To guarantee some open space.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like a really affordable price if nobody wants it, you know?
I guess my comment was more like with, I'm sure that's not the intention of the requirement to have to make it available for sale. That would be perhaps a peripheral benefit to the city itself, but I'm, I'm imagining the spirit and the intention of that requirement is truly to get more housing.
Yeah, and if you think about, like, they were not thinking of Little Nevada City when they made these laws. Like, it's, they're thinking of LA, LA probably has lots of large swathes of land that they just haven't, they, they sat on and, so it's more, it's, it's, they're talking more to big municipalities than, than us, but we're, we're caught in it too, because we're in California.
Was, I was talking to Councilmember Peterson about like, well, the, the fuel management thing. And it's the responsibility of the city, if it's owned by the city, and it can, if it's not, if it's not maintained, if there isn't the funding to clear it appropriately, then it would be beneficial for a property owner to become responsible for it. And, and so it would be savings to the city in terms of.
Unless they don't maintain it. Unless they don't maintain it, I suppose, that could be their liability.
They're.
But then it's not the city's liability, right?
I can think of a property the city doesn't maintain.
Um, okay.
Thank you, Amy.
Yes, thank you.
You are welcome.
Received and filed. Is that our direction?
I think so. Receive and file or? Acknowledge receipt and recommend the city council, recommend to city council that they direct staff to submit the two thousand and twenty-two housing, housing annual progress report.
I direct you.
So moved.
Yeah, shall we make a motion and, and vote that forward?
I don't think you need a, a motion, I don't feel like we need one. Unless you really want to.
I don't know, why not?
I don't, I don't really want to.
This one is not, I mean, we have to submit something to HCD, so.
Plan Commission sees no, no reason to not recommend it go to the council for consideration.
All right, and then we go one more thing here.
We should get credit for doing our job.
I gotta go through all my tables here to get to the next staff report. Ooh, okay, I know, I think, they were working on the internet, so some, I think there was some, some glitchy stuff going on.
Muelo, how do you say that?
Muelo, that's how I say it. Or you could just say the, the Model Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance.
I like muelo.
So there has been a muelo in place for some time, but in two thousand and fifteen, which is incidentally when I started here. I did not know that, that this report was a requirement and we got a real nasty letter from a law firm saying, you're having complied with your muelos, so. But all it is, is essentially any, really any commercial project that has a new landscaping component, they have to show that they're meeting certain water efficiency standards. And so now you'll see in conditions of approval where anyone's proposed, in both the projects today, they had to, they'll have to provide a report to me about their, the well, that complies with the muelo standards. So they'll have to tell me how much they landscaped, how much, if they're using turf, how much is turf? How many, I think, I can't remember what else is in there, but.
Is that where those requirements in our ordinance came from?
Yeah, you, well, they're not in our ordinance. Oh, our ordinance is, so we didn't adopt, we are required to use the California Model Water Landscape Efficiency Ordinance.
Okay.
We can adopt it and put it directly in our code, which might be a good idea, just for transparency. But most landscape architects who are working on these projects, they seem to be already very aware of it. The only reason to do it would be if we wanted to add restrictions. So for instance, I've seen other jurisdictions add, you have to put pool covers over your, your pools and stuff. We don't, we don't have a ton of pools, so probably wouldn't smudge that much, but.
So how does, but how does the drought-resistant stuff that's in seventeen eighty oh seven oh apply then?
Those are still requirements, those are still requirements, those are just our local requirements. This is statewide, yeah, yeah, and, and so those conditions come into play as well. They're, they're not in conflict, at, at least that I can, could see, I can see that there's anything in conflict. We, we, we like to see water efficient landscaping anyhow.
It's a good thing.
So.
Have a question, so if they, if a, if a project, if there's a hiccup, say, with a, with, with your sign-off on their muelo compliance and some modification needs to be made to their landscape plan, do you do that ministerially?
We pro, I mean, it.
Like, like no lawn, more trees, something like that?
Like, like for Cashin's Field, they did modify a couple of things. And as long as we can make the case that it was substantially compliant, that was a bad example because it, everything is essentially ministerial for that project, even though we took them through like four public meetings. But it's supposed to be ministerial, but if. But, um, it's supposed to be ministerial, but if, say it was a discretionary project, then, um, if, if it's substantially still complied with whatever was approved, then, um, we would, then, then they, we could still go forward. If not, they could either modify it to, to be substantially compliant and come in muello, or we'd bring it back to, to the commission.
Or a liaison could approve a change.
Or a liaison, and I've, sometimes if we didn't assign a liaison, I'll usually lean on the chair to, to, to say whether or not they think that substantially complies.
Okay, and, um.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike, my, uh. Oh, wait, my audio has an exclamation mark on it.
Your microphone's not working.
Russell's talking. He can't, we can't hear him.
Yeah, uh, my audio is not working. I'm just going to play around, choose a different speaker.
And Russell's jumpy video makes him look a little jumpy, and I don't think that's the case, but your video.
Whoa, that was weird. Okay, how's that? Is that better? Can you hear us?
I don't think so.
I, I don't know. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, you, you were great before, but you couldn't hear me, but I could hear you all very clearly.
Something happened, okay.
Sounds like you're in a big dance hall. And it's very echoey. Am I still jittery though?
No, yeah, you look a little less jittery now.
Okay, good. Well, that's the important thing. I've, I've smoothed out then, so.
Never doubted that you were not, that you were not jumpy.
I, I could have given you lots and lots more detail on surplus lands.
Oh, sorry about that. Did you want, did you want to go over anything right now?
Thank you.
There's a, there are, uh, one thing I heard, could you give it to the property owner next door? If it's small enough, if it's a little sliver, that would meet one of the exemptions.
Okay.
There's, there's a list of four, five, six things that are exempt surplus property, uh, but, um, yeah, they're looking for 25% affordable.
The 25%.
So in reality, you can build 75% market rate, uh, if you flip that on its head.
If you can build it all.
To meet the standard for developing the property. If negotiations are not finalized, then you can sell, you no longer have to, uh, you can sell it on the open market, but if any housing is built, 15% of that housing has to be, must be restricted to low or lower income levels, which are based on the county, um, average median income adjusted for family size.
Yeah. Thanks, Russ.
So really, the, the, the moderate income spot is your workforce housing, and that's 120% of AMI or less, so.
Yeah, we, we have nothing that forces anyone to do, uh, the, the workforce, the, the moderate housing level. So that might be some, someplace we should consider updating our code.
Yeah, because you probably need more moderate how.
We do.
Moderate income housing than you need lower, very low.
Right now, that is the case, yeah. Thank you. Sorry about that, Russ.
Thanks, Russ. Is, moving on?
Uh, yes, and that was, that was, that had to do with the, uh, the housing element, uh, report.
Mm-hmm.
Now we're on muello.
Back to muello.
Back to muello.
Makes me want to see muello yellow, I'll be honest.
Is there more on muello you'd like to present to us?
Nope, the only, the only thing I'll, I'll say is the only project that we had, so you only have to report on it when it's finalized, and the only project we had that was, uh, that was subject to, the, that got finalized the, last year was, uh, Cashin's Field. So that was the only project we reported on.
So it's residential, it's not commercial?
It's commercial. No, it is commercial as well.
Because what about the, um, what was it, the Byway Cafe?
That one will be, that one's on there too, but they haven't, they haven't done anything, so.
They haven't finished the Byway Cafe?
You mean, are you meaning on Holloway?
Holloway Cafe.
So that, they are subject to it. They will be.
Okay, and who, who is checking and enforcing?
Essentially me, so, but I rely a lot on their landscape architects to give me the information that muello requires, and then I, I plug it into the report.
Okay.
Are you still, uh, are you a liaison on that, or you were just?
I was, but we passed it, and she and I did talk about, um, like, I, I had no knowledge of muello at the time, but we did talk about doing drought-resistant landscaping.
And I think there was a revised plan, a revised landscape, landscape plan, or, or that, that resulted in a, in a landscape plan that came back to us that was.
Yeah, we approved some maple trees and some crepe myrtles or something like that.
Future requested agenda, agenda items now?
Yep, that's where we are.
I have one.
I think I know.
I would like to, uh, request a future discussion, maybe at our, at our, at our next meeting, regarding adding, uh, a dark skies, dark skies requirement, uh, to the zoning ordinance, I think.
Yeah, I think would be in our lighting ordinance, right? Would be a redo, re, an amendment to our lighting ordinance, right?
As part of the zoning code, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, that's, and that's, I had a discussion with, uh, with Sean about this, and he said it pertained to.
He mentioned it to me.
Yeah, so, um, so I'm suggesting we, uh, have, have a, a genized item, a staff report, um, of appropriate detail, that we can discuss, uh, at a meeting, and then essentially formally ask the city council to direct us to work on language, updating that for their approval.
Yeah, I think what I'll, well, I'll bring back, um, like, some samples of other people's codes and, um, or, or anything else, but, you know.
Like information from the International Dark Skies Association's guidelines, which has a lot to do with, uh, light, light color temperature and, and, and full cutoff, uh, fixtures, and I, um, it's probably not the time to present the evidence, but I did send you a couple of graphics that talk about via email today.
Okay.
That say what, that say what full cutoff means, and, and actually looking at those.
Yeah.
Those graphics, it indicates that, that, um, that to comply with our current, uh, business lighting standards, all fixtures, all business outdoor lighting fixtures would need to be full cutoff to, to reach that, to reach that, um, 30 degrees from horizontal standard for the ability of the light source.
What is full cutoff, Tom?
Um, it, it's.
Bold, you can't see the bulb essentially.
Yeah, so, 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 yeah, so it's a light fixture that has a, like a rim or something that makes sure the, the bulb, the light source is recessed to keep, to keep the light directed downward.
Versus projecting in your eyes.
Yeah, like, like no, no cutoff is, is like a globe, and, and partial cutoff is like a horizontal line.
With like part of it sticking out.
Right, right, which can allow for sky glow and that sort of thing. And, and a, a reason, a, a strong reason to pursue this is that it's, um, without, without clearer language on that, the objective standards that pertain to SB9 projects, uh.
All ministerial, yeah.
Yeah, it, it has, uh, it has a requirement that all outdoor fixtures need to be dark skies compliant in anticipation of greater density, um, so if there's a, if there are, you know, more projects, more hu, uh, housing units close to each other, that there needs to be like a really simple way to control light trespass and stuff onto adjacent property. So there's kind of an inconsistency, uh, in, in our.
Yeah, it's funny, we have it in our residential, we have it in some parts of our residential code, but not in like our commercial or other codes, so. Yeah, it, this would just make it applicable to the entire city.
I just checked your code, which is consistent with most other cities' codes. You have the authority to initiate a zoning amendment on your own, so just bring that back on the next agenda.
Meaning not.
You mean without city council?
Correct.
You say initiate, it means we would start it and it would still go to them for approval.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You would, you would take an action to say, staff, bring us back a, an amendment to the zoning code on dark sky lighting.
And then we approve it to pass to city council to approve.
And then it would, then, then the draft amendment would come back to you, and then you would recommend to the city council, and it would move on to the city council.
Okay, so they, they can just direct me to do it. They don't have to direct, uh, me to send it to council first and get direction from them. That's what you're saying, right?
Right.
They can just.
We don't need approval to work on.
But we're just talking about a future agenda item. Right now, it's not actually an agenda item, so you want to agendize the initiation.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll put it on the next agenda.
There you go.
To agendize it to approve, giving you direction to, to provide draft language.
To initiate the zoning amendment, yeah.
Got it, okay.
Ah, pure corsey. We'll get it, we'll get it.
Thank you, Tom.
Great idea.
Cool, yeah.
What other things can we do that way?
Any liaison reports? There, there, uh, there's one missing. I'm the liaison on the Broad, Broad Street.
Added it later because I remembered it later. So it's actually now in there, so you're on there.
Okay.
414 Broad Street.
Uh, 414, yes, but, but there's, but the, the, one on the other side, what's the address? They're rebuilding the porch.
Oh, 416 also?
No, on the other side of the street, the, um, I can't, I can't remember the name of the, of the. They're rebuilding, they're currently rebuilding the porch. We've been communicating about that.
Yes, okay, the, the bed and breakfast.
Right, on Broad Street, yeah.
The par, parsonage.
Amy just said she's the one for the Grove as well.
Yeah.
So that should probably be on this list too.
Where is, um, where is this list?
Page two.
Of the agenda.
Of the agenda, yeah. Plan Commission.
It's page two of the packet, yeah.
Just for completeness.
Yep, that's right. I tried to just go back through all the, um, the actions we've taken, and it was, it was not, not totally easy, so.
Right.
I'm sure I missed some.
We'll have a running list now.
But now, yeah, now we'll just add to it, anytime you guys have a liaison.
They're doing, they're, uh, uh, the, is it called the parsonage, uh, on, on Broad Street, the, yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
They're doing a great job. It looks really good, very, very original, very historic. They're doing a great job.
Yeah.
Looks good. There's a, a building permit report. I'm sure everybody read it, and.
Really, really light.
It's gonna be a test on it.
Shall we adjourn then?
Oh, what the heck, yeah.
This meeting is adjourned.